Good afternoon and welcome to the December 9, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence a call of our calendar, a copy of which can be found on the meeting webpage of the Board of Zoning Appeals on the Town of Brookhaven website. As noticed, this is a virtual hearing conducted on the Zoom platform. Advocants and other interested parties may participate by utilizing the interactive Zoom hearing link found on the meeting webpage or by utilizing the address www.brokehaven.ny.gov/join. When attending, please be sure to identify yourself by name and case number so that we may be able to determine which application you wish to speak on. The question and answer and chat functions on the Zoom can be utilized. Should you have any questions, which will be answered by our staff? Again, thank you for attending this virtual hearing. Apple applications before this board consists of reports, the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant, limited to those issues put on per person speaking in opposition. At the end or conclusion of each of the presentations, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the application today by motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place a matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we could hold the public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means is, at least in part, the relief that you seek from the board has been granted. A grant letter will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. That is the document that you return your interaction with the building department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is simply that your hearing was held today and the record is now closed. Under the code, the board has 62 days in which to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can access it off of the town's website under the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Once that decision is filed with the Office of the Town Clerk. Finally, if the motion that you hear at the end of your cases are motion to hold the public hearing open to a future date, this occurs when either you've not met conditions precedent as an applicant or maybe more commonly where the board requires additional information before we can decide the application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record and then the matter closes for decision. I want to acknowledge for the record receipt of notice documents for each of the applications pending today, I believe, except for one, which have been made part of the record and part of our files. In the course of your presentation as an applicant, please provide this board with any testimony you wish to be made part of the record for the board's consideration. Any exhibits previously provided have been made part of the record. If you are not an applicant today, but someone wishing to speak on an application, we will promote you as a participant at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. Opposition testimony before this board will have the same opportunity to provide the board with testimony for the board's consideration. We ask only whether it's more than one neighbor or person speaking on an application that you do not repeat with someone before you were said. Just indicate to us, please, that you agree with that prior point or testimony and then move on to issues not yet covered by prior speakers. In so doing, we can ensure that everyone wishing to speak will have that opportunity. I thank you for your attention. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice. Mr. Chair. Mr. Vega, yes.
I have a number of attendees who have not identified themselves.
All right, we will take care of that. Thank you. So once again, let me welcome you to the virtual hearing of the Board of Zoning Appeals, December 9, 2020. I'd like the first to take attendance.
Board members, James Mazzarella.
Present.
Charles Lazaru.
Present.
Howard Berksen.
Present.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom.
Present.
Chairman Paul DeChance.
Present. As I understand, there are a number of postponements, not from the 2:00 PM calendar, but from the 4:00 PM. So in hopes of or to avoid anyone staying and remaining on as a attendee, we're going to take those motions, the 4:00 PM motions now. Before doing so, I want to remind everyone that's here today and currently sitting as an attendee that you must, we appreciate you naming yourself, but we have no idea what case you wish to speak on unless you rename yourself with your name and case number. So there are, there are a number of you out there. I believe I see only one or two people or two persons with reference to a case number. Please take the moment now, identify yourself with your name and case number so that we can move through the attendee list and have everyone wishing to speak on the application that they came here on. So with regard to the motions, again, no applications for adjournments from the 2:00 PM interval calendar from the 4:00 PM interval calendar and holdover calendar. I'll ask Ms. Ricci, what motions? What adjournments do we have?
Case number 25, Anthony Frick, January 13th. And the rest are from the holdover calendar, case number 37 of August 26, 2020. Albert DeLuca being postponed to January 5th. Number 38 of March 25, 2020. Mohammed Iqbal, January 5th. Number 7 of November 18, 2020. Nessenger Realty, January 5th. Numbers 3 through 6A of July 11, 2018. Landmark Properties, January 27th. And number 5 of November 18, 2020. Dorothy Lufker, January 5th.
Does the board have that motion? Made in seconded all in favor. Opposed motion carries. I want to point out two things. I know that we have a number of persons here and interested in the Lufker application currently. Note that it has been adjourned. The adjourn date currently is January 5th. My second point is January 5th is not a hearing date of the Board of Zoning Appeals. January 5th, a quorum of the board will gather to adjourn these cases to actual hearing dates, which will be January 13th or January 27th, what was already pre-decided. So for those interested in the Lufker application.
January 27th.
Okay, so the adjournment is January 5th, but the hearing before this board will be January 27th. Please just check with the Board of Appeals Office if there's any confusion at all. That the, in short, though, the application that you just heard, including the Lufker application for a certificate of existing use, has been adjourned, current adjourn date is January 5th. The public hearing date, however, will be January 27th. All right, I think that would be it then. We can commence this hearing with case number one. And I think we're hearing it jointly with a case on the holdover calendar.
Yeah. Case number one, Peanut Construction Corp., care of Antonino Militello, PO Box 133 Smithtown, properties located on the northwest corner, New York State Route 25A and Miller Place Road, Miller Place. Applicant requests permission for proposed second detached sign, the Marshall sign, to be located on Route 25A. One sign is permitted per street frontage. The companion application on the holdover calendar that we're calling out of order is case number two of December 12, 2018, under the same name, same location. Applicant requests permission for second proposed ground sign to be located less than the required 22 feet from New York State Route 25A, 18 feet is proposed.
All right then, Mr. Vega, do we have an applicant's representative?
Mr. Chair, I have Peanut Construction Corp. And I also have a Lydia Jimenez. I'm not sure if she is a speaker or a expert.
Why don't we bring up the initial representative and we'll ask you.
I promoted both of them, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's fine.
I can.
No, it's fun. I think that we can move along. This as well.
Mr. Chair, just for your information, we have board member Rick Kudin joining in.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vega. I do see a box on the program identified as Peanut Construction CEO. I don't see anyone else that was promoted. I have a. I'm sorry, Ms. Jimenez. Okay. So I'm going to ask you both, if you can, whoever is going intending to speak to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Yes, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Ms. Jimenez, also, can you respond to that? Thank you.
Yes, I do.
All right. So can I, in the box entitled Peanut Construction Company, sir, can we take an appearance for the record, please?
I'll give my appearance first, Mr. Chairman, and I'm counsel for Peanut Construction. My name is Luigi Pigliotti, 1225 Franklin Avenue, Suite 325, Garden City, New York, 11530. Good afternoon to all the board members.
Good afternoon, sir. Are you presenting here or will you have someone else present?
No, someone else will be presenting, but for the record, I am joined by Mr. Militello and his daughter and the representatives from our sign company, which they'll be doing the presentation.
All right, then, can I, if that's the case, then, Mr. Militello, can I just ask you to to provide us with your name, address in relation to the application for us, please?
Antonino Militello, I'm the president of bad corporation, a negotiation. 133 Smithtown.
All right, sir. I know we're in the middle of appearances, but is Peanut Construction the owner of the shopping center?
Yes, yes.
So you're here for the shopping center and I see you have representatives of the sign company. Is there a representative of the bank?
I'm here representing the bank, M&amp;T Bank.
And that's Ms. Jimenez. I'm sorry, I have you on two different lists of boxes here, but let me take your appearance for the record then, please.
My name is Lydia Jimenez, 71 Hanrahan Avenue, Farmingville, New York, 11738. I'm from All-In Permit Consultants on behalf of M&amp;T Bank.
All right, we are hearing these two cases together. We do have comments from the board's planner with regard to his recommendations following a review of the application. Mr. Reed is here. We'll have him sworn and we'll take his testimony now.
I'll be reading that for.
Oh, I'm sorry. Due to some technical issues, Ms. Ricci will read that testimony for the record.
Okay, the first report is for case number one of the December 9th hearing. The relief request is as follows. Ground signs, two proposed, one permitted. It is noted that the applicant filed an application for a 24-foot-high, 190-square-foot ground sign at the premises in 2010, stemming from an application by the applicant Militello, case number 27 of December 15, 2010. The application was granted as amended for a 12-foot-high, 61-square-foot monument-style sign, par-revised drawing dated September 20, 2011. The applicant now seeks to provide for a conforming ground sign at 12 feet in height, 30 square feet of area with a 22-foot setback. While the applicant is now in compliance with the 2010 board mandate, the pylon sign, which advertises Marshalls, Wright-Aide, and other retail establishments is still existing 10 years after the board's mandate. As such, there is a concern that the applicant could potentially apply for a permit for the now conforming ground sign and have an opportunity to renew the building permit for same, which may allow for the non-conforming sign to remain for a further period of time. The application is being, the application is being provided to accommodate for a second proposed ground sign for M&amp;T Bank, which will be addressed in a companion application. In that proposal, not only conforms, but is in fact smaller in size with regard to the prior board mandate in 2010. There is no objection to the requested relief being a type-two action. And for the companion application, the requested relief is as follows. Two proposed, one permitted. And the setback is 18 feet, where 22 feet is required. That's an 18% relaxation. This matter was originally part of an application before the board in 2018, which was held indefinitely. Peanut Construction Corp., case number two of December 12, 2018. This matter was held due to the fact that the property owner did not comply with the prior board's mandate for the Marshall sign at the premises as articulated in the Peanut Construction Corp. application heard previously as case number one. With regard to the request for multiple ground signs, one is for Marshalls, which would communicate all the tenants at the 7.3-acre shopping center. M&amp;T Bank would be the second, which is 5.5 feet in height and 24 square feet in size and requires a four-foot relaxation for setback. It is noted that a CO was issued for the bank building at the parcel in 1973, which has changed names over the period of nearly 50 years. A ground sign advertising a bank at the location is more recent, having been issued a permit for same in 2003 for Washington Mutual. In light of the permit for a ground sign previously issued for a bank, there is no objection to said relief. The board should be cognizant that there is an additional pad site at the parcel, which enjoys an Applebee's restaurant, which does not have a ground sign. As such, the proposed endeavor may establish a precedent for Applebee's desiring a third ground sign. The application is a type-two action.
All right then, for the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner, Christopher Reed, Mr. Vigliata, and Mr. Vitello, I'm sorry, Mattello. This is now the third application to the Board of Zoning Appeals in the last 10 years. Yet there's no change at the shopping center. So who's ever presenting for the owner of the parcel? Please do so now and address that issue, please.
Hi, my name is Samuel. I'm on Sasha Five Signs and we're going to be in charge of the construction of the new sign.
All right, so you're in the sign company, but I want to get back to the owner. This is a third application for the same parcel for signage with no change since 2010. I'd like to know why that's the case. Mr. Mattello, Mr. Vigliata, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah. What? Well, Mr. Chairman, what I know about this matter is that we weren't aware, we were not aware that we were not in compliance. This sort of, to go back to what we had learned months and months ago, last year actually, there was a C of O that was granted, which was permanent. And so for all these many years, my client thought that he was in compliance. We only came to realize that the main sign was not in compliance when M&amp;T had applied for their own sign. And so naturally, it's our intention to remedy any outstanding non-compliance that currently exists. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. In 2010, Mr. Militello came to the board seeking signage for the, as I recall, the shopping center was being updated at that point. There were new large tenants coming in and there was a request for signage for the shopping center itself. The request, I think, was for another pylon sign that Grant, the board's action permitted, a monument sign with subject to the removal of the existing that was not done. And this is why we're inquiring. When it comes to the size of the sign for the bank and the setback proposed, the board, neither the planner nor the board takes issue with it. It's what we're going to do moving forward with the existing pylon sign. Ms. Jimenez, did you have anything to, did you have any input with regard to the relief sought for the bank?
Currently, the bank has, it was previously a Hudson City Bank and we were at a single pole pylon sign at 40 square feet, 15 feet overall height. When the M&amp;T Bank took over, they anticipated on complying with code and they reduced the signage to comply with today's code. And we're looking to some sort of approval for the bank.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vigliata, Mr. Militello, did you wish to add anything else here? Or the representative on behalf of the sign company?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything from the board on the application? Mr. Vega, do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no other speakers on this case.
All right. In light of the history of the application, I want us to have a very clear understanding. And this, this will certainly affect the bank's ability to install signage. In a moment, I'm going to ask the board for motions with regard to these applications. The motions will will have a very specific condition to them and it will be subject to the removal of the existing pylon sign prior to the issuance of any permits. So until this pylon sign is removed, the bank cannot get a permit to install a sign. I just want everyone to understand that, Mr. Militello, you especially, in order for any permits to issue for the new signage, the existing one has to be removed. So with regard to case number one, the chair would move to grant the application as a type-two action subject to the removal of the existing pylon sign prior to the issuance of a permit.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded all in favor. Opposed. Motion carries on the holdover calendar, case two of December 12, 2018. Chair would move to grant the application as a type-two action again, subject to the removal of the existing pylon sign on the parcel prior to the issuance of a permit.
Second.
Motion made in seconded all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Case number four, 1760 Route 25 LLC, 1780 Route 25 Ridge. Properties located on Southwest Corner, Middle Country Road and Giant Oak Road Ridge. Applicant requests the following relief for existing walk-in freezer in conjunction with Dunkin' Donuts Restaurant. Minimum rear yard setback, 25 foot required, 10 foot exists. And minimum buffer area adjacent to residential zone, 25 feet required, zero exists.
Mr. Chair, I have Lou Gallo for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega.
Am I unmuted?
You are, Mr. Gallo. We see you. Can you hear us?
Okay, I can. Very good.
Very good to see you. Let's take your appearance for the record, please.
Okay, Lou Gallo, 218 Harrison Avenue, Miller Place, Lou Gallo Expediting Incorporated, agent for the.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle, to be sworn.
Yes, solemnly swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. As you are aware, we have a planner here to testify following his review of the application. We'll take Mr. Reed's testimony now. I guess that again will be Mr. Cardy. Here.
Okay, the relief requested is as follows. Rear yard, 10 feet proposed, 25 feet required, a 60% relaxation. Minimum buffer to residential zone, 0 feet proposed, 25 feet required, a 100% relaxation. Permission for the Dunkin' Donuts restaurant from the former convenience store was granted by virtue of a change-of-use approval in 2012. As the improvements were being addressed with the building division, it was determined that the freezer was installed at the rear of the building, which now requires an additional change-of-use approval. Before this endeavor is approved, once again, the requested relief from the Board of Zoning Appeals is required. With regard to the requested relief, staff notes the freezer is modest in size at six feet in width and the building itself also does not meet the 25-foot rear yard requirement. Further, a concrete pad was also erected, which although it is at ground level, is located at the property line. Section 85, 843B1 of Town Code requires a 25-foot buffer next to residential zoning. It is noted that the adjacent residential parcel to where the buffer variance is being sought is vacant with the reputed owner being 1780 Route 25 LLC. An inquiry to the applicant's representative is recommended as to what relationship, if any, the applicant has with this adjacent property. At the area of the requested relief, there is an attractive PVC fence, which will help screen the freezer from view from the adjacent property. An inquiry from the applicant's representative is recommended as to the noise level emanating from the freezer, which has the potential to be detrimental to a residential use at the adjacent parcel in the future. This application is a type-two action.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner, Mr. Gallo. I know that you've probably received them before the hearing. What presentation did you have for the board?
Let me speak first to the freezer. I have spoken to the operator of Dunkin' Donuts, Mr. Moindis Singh, and the owner of the parcel, Mr. John Galino, who has a business right across the street from Dunkin' Donuts. Let me address the rear freezer first. Mr. Singh actually tells me that it's a practical necessity. He can't put it inside because it's just too small. The building is just too small to put the rear freezer, to put that freezer inside the building. It's mostly for food, frozen bagels, patties and milk. It's been there since 2013. As you can see from the pictures I have provided, it is shielded by a six-foot vinyl fence. And if you look beyond that fence, despite the fact that we've reached the buffer requirement, but beyond that vinyl fence, you have directly behind Dunkin' Donuts about an 80-foot decline, a wooded corridor of dense forest that exists in the building and the next resident. The individual who owns that particular wooded parcel is Mr. Galino himself. So he is the owner of Dunkin' Donuts. He's also the owner of the wooded corridor, not only to the south of the building, but if you take a look at the pictures from every angle that I have provided, looking west, he also owns that corridor there. The corridor declines going westward down to about 50 feet. But I can tell you that the conformity to the character of the neighborhood on that side has been met because all of the particular businesses have some kind of a buffer to the residence, against the residents of Giant Oak Drive. I actually went to Giant Oak Drive. It's because of the drop, not only can you hardly see some of these buildings and because of the dense forest and what you see now is the fall, but can you imagine in the spring and the summer when there's foliage there? It really blocks all of these buildings perfectly. There was no noise at all on that freezer. I spent time, as you can see from the pictures, from every angle, didn't even hear it. Didn't realize there was even any noise at all. It should also be noted that prior to Dunkin' Donuts construction, there was a Quickmart there in 1985 that had a refrigerator on the exact same spot. So the point I'm trying to register here is that whether you're talking about the freezer or the buffer, the owner, Mr. Galino and Mr. Singh have told me, the property configuration has not changed. And before the Quickmart, I understand there was a deli there in the 50s. Nothing has changed as far as the property configuration. Quickmart and of course Dunkin' Donuts have met the same property configuration, despite the fact that the freezer encroaches on the real line and the fact that we don't have really a buffer of 100, you know, maintained beyond that. If you proceed eastward, you're looking at the pictures again, Contractors Market, which is a Mason and Landscape Supply selling mulch, topsoil and sand, is also owned by Mr. Galino. And they have, if you take a look at their southern, their rear yard line, the next home is at least 200 feet. As far as, again, there's a dense wooded forest there, proceeding eastward, a Taco Bell. The same thing, a dense forest corridor, as far as the eye can see. I could not see any particular homes. And then, of course, east of that is air weld and air welding equipment supply. And going east, that's what, those pictures that you're seeing there is Contractors Market supply right there. That's going west, that's Taco Bell in the south. And if you see, that's southeast. Again, that's the Airwell Equipment Corporation. So my point is that as far as the character of the neighborhood, there is beyond these business properties, a very dense wooded corridor that shields the residents from any noise and from any disruption whatsoever on the south side of Route 25. Consequently, I would say that there is no adverse impact at all. The character of the neighborhood has been met. There's no undesirable change. None of these gentlemen have received any complaints. And I must accentuate the point that the footprint has been met. It's always been that way and these gentlemen just met the same property configuration. So we respectfully request that the board grant the relief as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Are there questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick question.
Yes, Mr. Berksen.
Lou, what's the level, how far does it drop off from a height point of view, from the property line, south?
Dunkin' Donuts, about 80 to 90 feet.
Though that's the length of it, but how, what's the elevation? Is it fall down 10 feet or five feet?
The elevation of Dunkin' Donuts?
No, no, you said it, I thought you said the elevation goes, is lower behind Dunkin' Donuts.
It does, in fact.
I'm just curious of how far it falls off.
It drops off about 80, 90 feet.
That's the length of the parcel.
That's correct.
Yeah, but it. But the elevation is how.
You're talking about the wooded area.
Yes.
Yeah, about 80 and 90 feet drop off. Beyond the fence line, beyond that vinyl fence to the next resident.
80 or 90 feet.
About 80 and 90.
Yeah, but what's.
Anthony, are there photographs of the?
The property, you said the property, the elevate, I'm sorry, Paul. You said the elevation of the property falls off, goes down.
Right.
Correct?
It goes south of that 80-foot corridor on a decline. It's not. It goes, it, south of that eighty-foot corridor is on a decline. It's not level, it's down.
Right, so do you have any idea of how, is it five feet lower? Yeah, the drop.
Well, I see. I, I went down there by that house and I would say it's a good maybe ten or fifteen feet.
Okay. All right, all right.
I remember looking up, that I remember.
Okay, all right, but a significant drop off.
If you, if you take a look, I provided one of the pictures here.
Mr. Gallo, is, is, look at the one that's being displayed now. That's the, that's the fence? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
That's Dunkin' Donuts, but there's another picture right after that, if Anthony can bring that up. That's it. That shows you the drop. Now, I am standing up right over the vinyl fence. You can see the vinyl fence is right there on the right-hand corner, right-hand corner. I'm peering over that fence and taking that picture, and that's about eighty to ninety feet to that resident right there. And then going west, it's, the distance is about fifty feet with these cars. But this is the biggest, the biggest width right here. The biggest expansion is right here, behind, directly behind Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Was there anything further from the board? Mr. Gallo, I, this, the, the parcel behind this, although owned by the same person, is certainly owned by two, two different corporate entities, but you're telling me the principles are the same. It remains a residential parcel, a single and separate and buildable. That's why the, the board's inquiry included the sounds that emanate from the walk-in refrigerator. You're saying you heard nothing, however, we know, we both know that this, the walk-in emits some level of noise. I just, can you characterize it any better for the board? Because again, this walk-in is ten feet from a residential property line.
If you, if you take a look at the, the pictures I provide, if Anthony can bring those up, I believe, let me just see. Right there, I, I stood right there, and I stood in the front of it, you know, on the dino, I stood there. I didn't hear anything, Paul, I have to admit. I, it wasn't noticeable. I didn't hear anything. And you can see I'm quite close and.
Did you, did you, did you determine where the, the motor for that is? Is it within the store itself? Are they connected somehow?
I have no idea.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha, I'm pretty sure you can help us with that.
I just wanted, I, I wanted to elaborate. If you see the, the condensation and cooling lines running up the side of the building, the compressors probably on the roof of the building.
On the roof, okay. And that's, that's, then that's the reason why I, Mr. Gallo, we're not hearing anything from the unit itself because it's located with most likely other hardware for the, for the.
I must say, you know, I, I understand from the owner that, and the operator, that that, with that freezer is exactly where the refrigerator was from Quickmart for nineteen eighty-five to two twelve, so.
All right, thank, thank you very much for that testimony. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion on this application?
Chairman, I move to approve the application submitted type-two.
motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Gallo. Have a good holiday.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye now, everyone. Have a good night, have a good day.
You too.
Case number five, Patchog Associates, care of Joseph Brigandi, ninety-five Frolick Farm Boulevard, Woodbury. Properties located on the northeast corner, Sunrise Highway, North Service Road, and Gateway Boulevard, Patchog. Applicant requests height variance for proposed twenty-three point eight foot high, two hundred and seventy-four square foot wall sign.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Mursari and Sarah Marasola for the applicant.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you. I'm not sure that I can see you yet.
Hi, I don't, this is my first Zoom meeting.
Well, you're doing well. Sounds like your phone is excited because it's, it's making noises for us too. Let me see if I could find you. Michelle, I see you. Is, is there anyone here separately?
Yes, I should have Patty Shore and Sarah Marasola. Either, either of them should be joining us.
Mr. Chair, I'm promoting Patty Shore.
Thank you. Is there anyone else as, as an, as an attendee that?
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you. I'm just looking to see whether I could locate. Locate your.
There I am.
Oh, I believe you. All right, Patty, I see you also. Is there anyone else that we have as an attendee wishing to speak?
Sarah's supposed to be on, but I can, I can talk.
All right, so one, one, let me just ask you both to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
Mr. Chair, we do have Sarah Marasola.
Oh, you know what? Let's wait for that.
She's here. She's here.
I'm here.
Okay.
All right, and I do see you now. All right, so can I have each of you give your attention to the board's attorney, please?
You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Yes.
Very good. May I, who's going to speak first?
I am.
All right, and Miss Short, may I ask you to give your appearance for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I, we take your name and address and your affiliation to the application?
Missouri Signs. And my address, one forty-eight dash two seven Guy R Brewer Boulevard, Jamaica, New York.
Thank you. And your name?
Patty Shore, S H O R E.
Thank you. All right, then, Miss Short, as you are aware, the board's planner reviewed this application. Mr. Reed is here. I think technologically, he's with us now. We'll have, we'll take his testimony first.
Thank you.
John, are you still there? I need to be sworn.
John Doyle?
Mr. Chair, I believe you can swear him.
All right, then, Street. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Very good.
And the applicant seeks variances for proposed signage in the properties located at the northeast corner of Sunrise Highway in Gateway Boulevard in the Hamlet of Patchog and located within the Gateway Plaza Shopping Center. The proposal intends to advertise Ashley Home Store, of which the retailer is going into approximately half the space of the former Bob's Store. As previously mentioned, Ashley Home Store is utilizing space formerly by Bob's. A second tenant, apparently for Burlington, will be the other. It is noted that a change of use for this endeavor, along with a facade change at the shopping center, was granted by the planning board on March nine, two thousand and twenty. There are other major tenants in the Gateway Shopping Center with large signs, including the following: Home Depot at four hundred and thirty-eight square feet, L.A. Fitness, two hundred and fifteen square feet, Marshalls, two hundred and ninety-five square feet, and Dix, which enjoys a four hundred and twenty-four square foot sign at thirty-one feet in height. As such, the proposal would appear to have certain conformance with other major tenants with enhanced facade treatments. These features would appear to distinguish other retailers at the shopping center from seeking such significant relief for similar signage in the future, and the application is a type-two action.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner. Ms. Short, did you, what presentation did you have for us?
Simply to reiterate what he has just said, and that the additional size of the sign is in keeping with the other signs approved within this center.
No problem. Thank you. Questions are coming, some board members? All right, I, I don't hear any, and that doesn't surprise me because, Mr. Wisdom, did you, did you have a question?
Well, I do. This, this is, I'm very familiar with these properties back there, back there on a lot of New Jones most of the time. So the sign on the corner of Sunrise Highway coming into the Gateway Boulevard, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't.
Make sure you can't, you can't hear him?
Very, very little.
All right, Mr. Mr. Wisdom, if you could just pick your voice up for us, please.
Okay, so the, the sign that's on the corner of Sunrise Highway, coming in off the Service Road into Gateway Boulevard, that, this is good, this comes right up to the Bob's Stores, correct? I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
I, I understand this was formerly the Bob's Store.
Yes.
Okay, so, so this would not be out of character with what was here before.
Exactly.
Okay, so this is going to conform to the old, pretty much to the old style that we're, we're, we're used to. I'm looking at the rendition on the, on the building. So are we talking about the pylon sign standing right out onto the Sunrise Highway and Gateway Boulevard? Is that the location you're talking about?
This is regarding the storefront sign.
Did the application is for a wall sign?
All right, so it's just the wall sign. And I know that Bob's Store had a wall sign up above it also. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Miss Short?
A little bit. He was asking about the pylon signs, and I just stated that it's regarding the storefront sign.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so it's not going to be out of, out of character to the way that the building looked originally when it was Bob's Stores.
Exactly.
Correct? I have nothing further.
All right, you know, I see, I do note from the testimony that the, the planner's review took no issue with the application. Is there anything further from the board on the application? We do have two and other individuals with us. Miss Short, did you wish to have any further testimony, Ms. Mursari? Ms. Marasola, would either of you like to say anything?
Uh, no, Patty covered it all, just that, you know, it's conforming with the other signs in the shopping center, and it's actually less a square foot than what was previously there, so we were assuming a smooth approval.
Thank you. I know that you've been sworn for the record, though. Could you just state your name and address so that we know who to attach the testimony to?
Sure, Michelle Misery, one four eight dash two seven Guy R Brewer Boulevard, Jamaica, New York, one one four three four. I'm with Misery Sign Company.
Thank you. And Ms. Marasola, did you wish to add anything further?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Then, if there's nothing further, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to grant the application as submitted type-two.
Second.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Case number six, Triple Five Aviation Industries, Inc., One Meadowland Plaza, East Rutherford, New Jersey, property is located on the southeast corner Flower Hill Drive East and William Floyd Parkway, North Side Grand Avenue and East Side Oak Avenue in Shirley. Applicant requests to amend special permit number zero eight D five three five two six to allow accessory overnight parking to commercial vehicles and associated training.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have a Christopher Kent.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
I do not. I have a bunch of people here who possibly might be on this, but they did not give me a number or tell me in the chat.
All right, then let me just remind everyone that is, that are sitting with us as an attendee. If you wish to speak in this hearing, you will need to rename yourself with the case number that you're interested in so we know when to promote you during the hearing. Mr. Kent, are you with us yet? Okay, it looks like you've unmuted.
You hear me now?
We can hear you. Let's try some video.
Excuse me?
Oh, we're asking you to, to, to open, there you go. We can, we can see you now. You can hear us. Counsel, may we take your appearance for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Christopher Kent from Farrell Fritz, P.C., one hundred Motor Parkway, Suite three hundred, Hop-on, New York, one one seven eight seven.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, sir. You are here for the applicant today.
Yes, I am.
All right, we'll start this hearing with the testimony of the board's planner, Christopher Reed.
The applicant seeks an amendment of existing special permit for proposed outdoor storage of vehicles with training station in the properties located at the southeast corner, William Floyd Parkway and Flower Hill Road in the Hamlet of Shirley and the former home to the Dowling College or Caveon Campus. A special permit zero eight B five three five two six is on file for college and university in residential zone. And the applicant seeks an amendment to the special permit for proposed outdoor storage of vehicles with training station in association with Amazon. The area for vehicle training and storage accounts for approximately three point five acres of the one hundred and four acre parcel and within an improved asphalt parking area. In that the endeavor requires an amendment of the special permit, it is recommended that the applicant demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the application conforms to the special permit requirements depicted in section eighty-five fifty-seven of Town Code, including, but not limited to, the following: That the use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties or of properties in the surrounding area or impair the values thereof, and that the safety, health, welfare, comfort, convenience, or order of the town will not be adversely affected by the proposed use and its location. And in making such a determination, the board shall give consideration to the following germane to the subject application. The effect that the location of the proposed use may have upon the creation or undue increase of traffic congestion, congestion on public streets, highways, or waterways. Whether the use of materials incidental thereto or produced thereby may give off obnoxious gases, odors, smoke, or soot, whether the use will cause disturbing emission of electrical discharges, dust, light, vibration, or noise, and whether the pot area is sufficient, appropriate, and adequate for the use and the reasonable anticipated operation and expansion thereof. An inquiry to the applicant's representative is recommended as to how many vehicles are intended to be stored at the subject parcel and whether or not driver training will occur off-site. Staff notes the parcel has an access on Flower Hill Drive, although a site inspection revealed this area was closed with a gate, and that this area buts a residential area access vehicle traffic at this location has the potential to be detrimental to the community. And should the board look favorably on the application, a prohibition for ingress and egress to vehicle traffic from Flower Hill Drive is recommended, as well as a condition that driver training remain on-site and not occur on town or county arterials. Further, as with other applications for special permits, the board may wish to place a term limit on the special permit. As per sequel, the application is an unlisted action.
Thank you. For the record, then, those are the comments and the testimony of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Before we begin, Mr. Vega, can I ask you just to put the site plan or survey up, whatever the case is in this instance? All right, very good. I'm, Counsel, what did you, what did you have to present to us?
Okay, well, thank you very much. First of all, I, I want to state that this is a proposed temporary use of an existing three and a half acre parking area at the Dowling College Sports Complex and Aviation Training Center on the east side of William Floyd Parkway, south of, south of Flower Hill Drive East and north of Grand Avenue. The complex received a special permit from this board in February nineteen ninety-three to permit the development of the approximately hundred and five acre Dowling College campus. The approved campus included an aviation training center, a sports and recreation complex, and two dormitory buildings. The approval had conditions that were identified in the finding statements attached to the special permit that were adopted in connection with the DEIS and the FEIS for the proposed project. Part of those findings required the installation of significant traffic. Part of those findings required the installation of significant traffic mitigation measures identified in the DEIS and the FEIS. And those traffic mitigation measures have been completed. As stated in the finding statement, those improvements were required to address air and ground traffic and parking adequacy to utilize the proposed college campus and included, and the included recreational facilities and dormitories. If I could, I would like to share my screen if I could. I have some additional maps here that I think would be very useful, but I could not generate for your, for submission. I just have a one single map that I'd like to show you.
Mr. Kent, let me, let me stop you there in, in the normal circumstances, we can. Mr. Vega, did you want to input anything here?
Yeah, Mr. Kent, if you'd like to email me a PDF of it, I can bring it up. I just cannot have you sharing the screen with the board right now.
Well, I can't, I can't PDF this. It's a Google Earth map that demonstrates the traffic improvements that were done on William Floyd Parkway at the entrance to the Dowling College campus. There actually is a, in this, in the presentation, if you go back a couple of slides, it's just not as effective. But I can show you the one that stated traffic improvements from prior special permit.
Mr. Chair, I've received no PDFs from the applicant.
Ms. Gordy, do we have anything in the file? Uh, Mr. Kent, let me ask you, now that we've, we stopped this, do you know when they were delivered? And I should ask you also, have you delivered your notice proofs? Because as of this morning, we have the notice proofs.
Yeah, the notice proofs and a 14-page PDF was sent to the town yesterday.
Alright, we, we, we have an email. I believe Ms. Gordy is pulling it up now.
Alright, Mr. Chair, I have the actual survey from a surveyor, and that is what is on the screen right now. Um, or if there was others, the presentation, Ms. Gordy can email to me and I can pull it up immediately.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. So I'll continue on. The factors considered in connection with the traffic mitigation measure that were undertaken as part of the prior special permit that was approved by this board uh, was to have sufficient capability for air and ground traffic and parking adequacy for the following factors: college enrollment, scheduled events at the recreational facilities, which included a baseball, softball, and soccer facility, the residential living within the dormitories, and college activities at the aviation center, and other planned programs at the complex and within the various facilities. This parking lot, the parking area that we're proposing to utilize was a part of this application and was originally designed for use by the recreational facilities as planned, that were planned and scheduled events that occurred throughout, oh, here you go, throughout the week by the college and community. So, let's take a look. If you could, the, uh, the area, the parking area directly across from the recreational facility is the proposed site, as shown on the site plan. But this aerial photo gives a good indication of the location uh, of the parking area. That parking lot has 331 parking spaces in that parking lot. If you scroll down, I'm not sure if it's down or up, Anthony, I apologize. Now, that's not our.
Kent, I only have aerials. This is the, uh, this is the only aerial I have at the moment. If you just give me a moment.
We submitted a, 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 a aerial map that's entitled it's entitled "Traffic Improvements Required by Prior Special Permit." I can tell you that the traffic mitigation measures required for the prior special permit that was granted for those uses included a two-lane crossover for traffic that was southbound on William Floyd Parkway, a signalized two-lane crossover that would allow you to enter into, make a left-hand turn to enter into the, the complex. Oh, here you go.
Mr. Chairman, I have the presentation up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Kent, which exhibit are you on?
I, I will go down to, uh, keep, keep going down, I'm sorry. Oh no, you passed it now, I apologize. This one, traffic improvements. Can you somehow blow that up bigger? Okay, so if you could see from this, uh, these, these are the traffic mitigation measures that were undertaken on the prior special permit. They included a southbound traffic on William Floyd Parkway, had a dedicated two lanes to turn left, signalized to cross over the northbound traffic to make a left-hand turn into the complex. So if you see that at the north, at the, at the very north end of this aerial photo, and coming in from the south, they had dedicated right-turn-in lane that was created on the William Floyd Parkway to head to the site. Leaving the site, you had both a dedicated lane that to make a right turn to head north on William Floyd Parkway, and you also had a crossover, signalized crossover to make a left-hand turn to head south on William Floyd Parkway. These were all traffic mitigation measures required by the finding statement that was adopted in connection with the prior special permit that was granted for the Dowling College campus. These were to mitigate any impacts upon traffic that may have been, uh, realized from the college enrollment, the scheduled recreational activities, uh, the use of the aviation training center, all within the college campus. Based upon current conditions, none of those facilities are, are open. They're all closed right now. There is no college enrollment. The college, in fact, is closed. There's no one utilizing the recreational facilities, the soccer fields, the baseball field, and the softball field. There's no one utilizing the aviation training center or, and no one residing in the dormitories. So currently, there is no traffic going in and out of this location at this time. As I stated, if you could drop, uh, if you could go up one slide, Anthony, that's the parking lot that's being utilized for this proposed amendment to the special permit, just the northern parking lot, not the southern one. Uh, that parking lot where the red arrow is, is a 331 parking spaces that include eight handicap parking spaces. The parking area to be utilized, uh, was originally designed for use by the recreational facilities and planned and scheduled events that occurred throughout the week by the college community, the college and the surrounding community. That facilities, those facilities, the soccer fields, were open to the commu, for community use, in addition to colleges. The road, as I stated earlier, has an intersection at the entrance to the facility of William Floyd Parkway that was designed and improved to address the anticipated demand for the entire proposed college campus and the community use of the recreational facilities. That college campus is now closed, and there are no recreational uses that are, that are being, uh, that are, that are ongoing. The proposed use of this parking lot is for delivery drivers' training for Amazon. Amazon has opened a, a delivery center on Precision Drive, which is just about a mile north along William Floyd Parkway. This parking lot will, uh, will have delivery service providers. Those are the deliberate, the van, the, the drivers for the vans will come to this site, will be engaged in a week-long driver training program on how to operate these vans and vehicles uh, conducted by Amazon. And they will come in in waves of, of roughly 40 to 50 vehicles at a time, much like you would have people or students arriving for classes or people arriving for events. The parking and training for delivery service providers will be, will allow them to become accustomed, uh, to the vans and operations of the vans for use and delivery. The driver training will occur within the parking lot. They will teach them how to maneuver the, the vehicles. I apologize that my phone is ringing.
No problem.
Uh, they, they will allow them to teach them to, you know, uh, stop the trucks, back the trucks, the vans, the small, they're small vans. These are Amazon delivery vans. And, uh, to, to, uh, learn how to, uh, circle around and park and back up the vehicles. They will also learn how to load and unload the vehicles, uh, that will simulate that. This is, this is not the delivery center. This is just a parking and, uh, and training center. The delivery center is on Precision Drive in Shirley in the industrial park up just south of the Long Island Expressway. There will be no access to Flower Hill Drive. That gate will remain closed. The proposed use is consistent with the designed use of the premises and will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties or properties in the surrounding area, and there will be no impact on the values of those surrounding properties. The, the safety, health, welfare, and comfort, convenience, or order of the town will not be adversely affected by the proposed use and its location. As stated, these, these, uh, delivery service providers will come in in, in small groups, about 40 to 50 at a time, and they'll be engaged in training, training for use, uh, for the use of the vehicles. All the delivery, uh, delivery and loading of these vehicles will be done at the facility that was previously approved on Precision Drive. If there are any questions, I'm available to respond.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kent. So, so you've indicated to the board that there will be 40 to 50 persons in training at any particular time. Talk to us about the number of vehicles that will be stored for, on any particular time. Is it only 40 or 50 a day, or will all those vehicles be stored there?
No, vehicles will be stored as needed. The other location has, uh, the availability to store roughly 200 to 250 vans up on Precision Drive or in that area. This is, uh, off-site, uh, storage of vehicles. There will never be more than 200 vehicles stored at this site. Uh, that's, that's what, you know, and that's only during very peak time when, uh, when deliveries are active, which is right now, really, for the Christmas holidays. So there could be as many as 200, uh, small, uh, Amazon-type vans stored at this, uh, parking lot at any one time.
In terms of the proposed hours of training, is this daylight training? Does it go beyond daylight? What, 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 what is proposed?
No, the hours would be, uh, generally about between 6:30 in the morning and 12:30 in the afternoon. Uh, after that, uh, all packages, all, all vans will be taken over to the delivery center and loaded with packages and then, uh, go out, uh, for deliveries.
So training is during business hours?
Yes.
And in terms of the duration, the, uh, that, that you believe Amazon is looking for, and for the, for this use at this, at this location, tell us about that.
The initial, uh, agreement is for two years. And they have the right to renew uh, six-month renewals, up to four six-month renewals. So if they exercise.
Alright, so you, you just told me what you can actually lease for, but in terms of the special permit, it, it, in and of itself has a duration. It is, uh, if it's a two-year permit, then you'd have to come back for special permit if you were going to renew. If it was three years, then you might get your six-month period incorporated into that. That sounds as though it's the safer way to go, is that?
I would request a three-year, uh, special.
Alright, so in terms of this board's relevant considerations, I see that you went through them. Obviously, the most significant of those considerations are, uh, the effect of the proposed use on the adjacent roadways and neighborhoods and the issue of whether there are, or, uh, emissions or vibrations or noise coming from the intended use. With regard to the, uh, former, uh, you've indicated to us, uh, the proposed use won't have an effect on an adjacent roadways because the training is going to be on-site only. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the vehicles will enter the site only from William Floyd Parkway and where, and there's no access to Flower Hill Drive, and you've agreed to those conditions?
Yes.
And in terms of, talk to us about the, the noise that you would expect. You're saying, you're saying that, that, we'll, we'll talk to us then about the noise that you anticipate coming from, from this type of activity. Is, do we have 50 trucks running at, at once?
There would be no more. I don't think there would be any, uh, noise greater than the aviation training center that this site was approved for. Uh, the noise would be consistent with, uh, vehicles, uh, coming and going as may occur when you are conducting college classes or having an active recreational facility, people coming and going to soccer games without the cheering.
Alright, the board, the board notes, this is, uh, this is 104 acre parcel. The, uh, the interest and the, the, uh, request for activity is only on a 3.5 acre site existing parking lot. It looks like within this, almost the center of the 104 acres. Did you have the opportunity to take measurement of the nearest residential use to this parking lot?
I haven't, but the nearest residential uses are greater, are along Flower Hill Drive would be approximately, uh, it looks like about 500 feet into Grand Avenue, it's about 600 feet.
Alright, well, thank you very much for those responses. Are there further questions or comments, some board members?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cunha?
Uh, I have one question. Uh, I heard that the applicant is planning on storing approximately 200 vehicles overnight. Is that correct?
Yes, these would be the, uh, Amazon vans as needed. Uh, it, it's an off-site kind of surplus area uh, for vehicles that cannot be stored overnight on Precision Drive.
Now, they're going to be stored, is there going to be some sort of securing operation or somebody, a security system or people, uh, watching and protecting these vehicles at the same time? Uh, and what about light pollution in the area?
Well, there's existing lighting in the parking lot, and they would be utilizing the existing lighting. And so there's no additional lighting. And there would be security. There would be Amazon, uh, staff, people would be, uh, securing the vehicles.
So the security would be vehicle-based, not, not, uh, land-based? In other words, they would be traveling among, among the two locations, or would they be there permanently?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, but I know that Amazon is very, uh, uh, cognizant and aware of maintaining security of their vehicles.
No, and the reason I ask is because there's going to be actual vehicle movement past business hours, if that's the case, at least with regard to security. And I'm assuming even vehicles coming back after deliveries, which, you know, Amazon usually delivers what, up until 8:00, 9:00 PM, and usually holidays even later. So you will have longer than business hours coming back and storing vehicles. Is that correct?
Uh, they are, they have a requirement. They, they cannot make any deliveries after 9:00 PM is, is a company policy. I did provide the company policy with my submission. They, they expect that all vehicles would be back on-site by 10:30 PM.
And in your opinion, that would not disturb the neighbors?
Based on the location of this, uh, of the premises, the, the, where it's located within the center of the, uh, college campus, and the fact that this college, uh, the prior special permit granted to college, uh, the, uh, business hours up until 10:00 PM, I don't really see it as a significant amendment to the special permit.
Okay, thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything? I believe Mr. Lazar had a question.
I mean, I did.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think your latest statement, Counsel, before that I grabbed, and that was, if I put my light glasses on here, you said the proposed use would be the same as previous, which was by Dowling College. This doesn't seem to be the same use. I didn't say the same use. I said it would be consistent with the type of use. No, I wrote it down. You said the same use, nonetheless. Well, I mean, the use being parking is what I'm referring to. Well, you're using it for driving training.
Well, you're using it for driving training. They don't.
Driver training as composed to aviation airplane, flying airplane training and driver training is, I, I would, I would actually argue that that's a similar type of training, uh, although less impactful upon neighbors.
Well.
I would say aviation training to be more impactful.
The, the aviation training is not performed on this site. It used, I know, I know, I know this site very well. I lived very close to this and used to have a summer home right behind the end of their runway. Uh, the other situation is in Mr. Reed's notice says the special permit and the number was indicated is for college and university in a residential zone. Um, you're kind of uh, backpacking on top of a previous special permit, which is for a college and a university. Is there any reason why Amazon or whoever you represent didn't apply for this as a special permit? And who does this property now belong to?
And let, let me answer part of that. It was determined, uh, because it, uh, the request was an amendment to the existing permit and the zoning board granted the existing special permit that the applicant, um, apply in the manner in which they applied.
Okay, can I add, I'll answer the other two questions. The, uh, I represent Triple Five Aviation Industries, the old property owner. Uh, the property is currently vacant. The special permit that was granted in nineteen ninety-three included, uh, as number six. Uh, that it would, it would allow flight training, uh, between the hours of eight A M. and ten P M. The prior special permit provided that.
Um, assurances that the truck, uh, training for the vans, which are now up to the size of a FedEx truck and not just a small Dodge Ram vans anymore. Um, how are we assured that they will remain on that one's particular site and they don't roam around in the streets that, that are roaming around in the particular, uh, almost one hundred acre property? It will be confined.
I would say they, they would, they will start off training them inside the parking lot. They may take them out on this little road that has the cul-de, has the circle all within the, uh, within the, the campus site, though. I don't, they're not going off-site.
They were not going off the campus site, but I think you stated that it would be confined to this particular three hundred and thirty-one parking space plot. So do we have a contradiction?
Uh, if I made a contradiction, I apologize. I don't, I, I, they are, uh, their, their representation to me, this is Amazon now, has represented to me that they're going to remain onsite. So I, I apologize if that, uh, if that was, uh, if I either stated it incorrectly or it was interpreted to mean on the, on site of the three and a half acre site, uh, or, uh, within the hundred and four acre site. But I, I, I don't know how the training, I really don't have specifically what they're going to do. I was told they're going to teach them how to park, back up, operate the vehicles. Uh, I could see them maybe going out onto this little road. If you could, I don't know if you could see it on your screen. I'm looking at a Google map on my screen. There is a road to a separated driveway with a circle. Uh, I could see them utilizing that roadway to, uh, onsite roadway to, provide training to these drivers.
Uh, that's one of the reasons why I asked the question because of, uh, I have the survey and I, as I said, I'm familiar with the campus, been on it before. Um, I have no further questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lazaru. Mr. Burksen, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what, what are these vans? Are they, uh, how do they propel? Is it gas, propane, electric? Uh, diesel, do you know?
I think they're gas now, but a lot of these companies, I know UPS is, uh, and I know Amazon is also concerned about it. They're converting over to, uh, electric vehicles. Uh, I don't know what's going to happen over the next two years, but I know there's a lot of efforts right now. UPS needs a, uh, complete overhaul of their vehicles to make them elect, to electrify them.
V- these are brand-new vans. They're not overhauling this right away.
Yeah, yeah.
The, uh, it's not clear to me the timeframe that you're asking for in the special permit in terms of the, the training. I'm hearing the training's going to be done by twelve thirty, uh, but the parking's not going to be done till ten thirty.
Well, because these trucks will also go out into, for deliveries, the same trucks.
So how you.
They go in waves. They start loading trucks at six thirty in the morning. They already have trucks over at the Precision Drive facility. I think they have two hundred and fifty trucks now going out on the road from that location. They're looking to add two hundred more delivery service providers.
I, I, I understand. I understand. My question is for this purpose, the, the training is going to be a more intense use than just coming back and parking the vehicles and going home. So my question is, is there, is there a timeframe that you're proposing, uh, for the training, or is it, you're suggesting that the training could be anytime during business hours? I just want to clarify.
I would say the training will occur sometime between six thirty A M. and twelve thirty P M. Trucks will then start to head over. Those, these trucks would start to head over to their.
Okay. I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Is there anything further from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, one.
Mr. Cunha, yes.
I just want to elaborate on what, uh, Mr. Burksen was, uh, asking. Um, so the, the training will be over by twelve P M., but yet you still have two hundred and some odd vehicles going in and out onto town roads, county roads, what have you, from that location. So it's mainly, I, I mean, I see it as, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is training, but at the same time, it's a staging area for your, for your, for your vehicles, for your entire fleet.
Yeah, the fleet with the, well, not the entire fleet. This is, uh, less than half of the fleet. The fleet is about, is, is, could be as many as four hundred and fifty vehicles. They currently have two hundred and fifty vehicles on the road coming out of Precision Drive. They're looking to, uh, use this as a training and storage area for vehicles overnight. These vehicles, uh, they go to the delivery center as, as, what they told me, as in waves, forty to fifty vehicles at a time, queue up over at Precision Drive. Get, uh, they, they load those delivery vans and those go out for deliveries. Uh, so these vehicles are going to be, have a dual purpose. They'll be training and then there'll be drivers picking them and over to the delivery center and going out in, for deliveries.
Yeah, uh, again, I, um, maybe, maybe I'm not seeing this correctly, but it seems as though it's more of a queue and more of a staging area for delivery than actual training.
It's both.
You're.
Rick, let me clarify that because I'm not sure that I understand. When, when you say staging area, it means to me that the, the v- the vans are being, um, loaded at the, this site. What I'm hearing is that the vans are being loaded at the Amazon site. And is that, is that your question? I just want to, when you say, uh, staged, I don't understand.
I, I apologize for the wrong terminology. May, maybe I, maybe I misspoke, but what I, what I'm trying to say is, is they're queuing up these vans and they're going to send them over to the other site, yet they're telling us they're not putting the vans on the road. But really, part of the training is going out on the road and going up to the other site to pick up materials or what, uh, delivery products. So, I mean, you're going to have two hundred and fifty vehicles stored here that are essentially, no matter what, going out onto the roads, training. Whether it's training onsite or training offsite, they're still, you know, they train in the morning, they're still training in the afternoon. Um, unless you plan on sending people home and not driving out of there with those same vans.
That's correct. They're not. So what, they do, do drive-alongs. So they could be in the vehicle. Part of the training would be in the vehicle while somebody who's already trained is driving. This would not be two hundred and fifty vehicles at this site. They have two hundred and fifty vehicles at the other site. This is, this is, could be as many as two hundred at this site based on need.
But you have three hundred parking stalls that you're asking for. So that, that could essentially.
The size of the property is got three. I'm just saying that this, the property has three hundred and thirty-one parking spaces.
So it can be escalated to three hundred and thirty-one vans.
Not vans, no, because they don't need that many. Their maximum, what they're looking at is the maximum that they could ever use at this site was four hundred and fifty. And that actually may become less as they start, uh, as they start securing other sites. They're working on a site out at Gabreski Airport in West Hampton Beach. I know they're working on another site in Brookhaven. Uh, this site, though, is servicing the Shirley, uh, Precision Drive location.
Okay, but you basically answered my question, which is they can escalate up to three hundred and thirty-one vehicles if they needed to, and they are going out on the road. They're not just.
You did not say that. I said they're asking for two hundred vehicles. That's what they're asking for at this location. They also need to, so when somebody comes there in their vehicle, they have to park also. So you, you have to remember there's, there's a, a car, somebody comes in their car, parks their car, and there are, are trucks there that they can use for training.
No, I understand. I, 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 I get what you're saying, but they're not going to leave their cars there overnight. So like I said, you have the possibility of putting in three hundred and thirty-one vehicles overnight. So I get that. I just wanted to, you know, bring it out that they're not only staying there to train, they're, they're in and out of these traffic situations on William Floyd and so forth. So they are moving out two hundred vans, let's say, as you're saying, back and forth.
Back and forth. They go out, they would deliver, and then they'd come at the end of the night and park the truck.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, they don't.
And, and the business hours that we were talking about before is Amazon business hours, not regular business hours. So I, I, I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Well, the training would occur earlier in the day during business hours. And the delivery schedules, that the parking lot could be empty from twelve thirty till ten o'clock at night. Trucks could come back, or the trucks will start coming back probably earlier than that, probably like seven o'clock. And then they would start parking them until all the trucks come back after deliveries, and then they would park the trucks overnight. And then start up again the next morning.
Okay, thank you.
That's the, realistically, I mean, the way this, the way they're envisioning this to work.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Mazarella.
How you doing, Mr. Kent?
Well, thank you.
Good. Thank you for being here. Uh, my question also has to do with traffic flow. Um, and you touched on it, uh, just a minute ago while you were speaking to, uh, Mr. Cunha, uh, the board member. Um, as far as the employees or prospective employees slash trainees, um, you spoke about the fact that they would be, uh, storing their own vehicles there as well. Um, I'm, what I'm just curious to know is if there is any estimate on, um, the amount of non-Amazon traffic that will be coming in and out of there vis-a-vis training and or picking up and dropping off those vans, uh, throughout the day.
Again, uh, people would be coming, there would be two hu- the possibility of having two hundred vans there. You know, people coming in in their own cars, parking, utilizing some of the vans for training. Some of those people might be leaving. They might be getting into a van with an Amazon, trained Amazon driver for what they do for what they call ride-along, ride-alongs, where they go out in the field. And they have, they go out in a day. I don't know if you've seen them around. Some of the trucks have two people, some of them have one person. Two-people trucks are, the person driving is a trained driver, the people, person going along is on a drive-along. That's kind of how they work in these.
What I'm trying to figure out is, um, if we're dealing with three hundred and thirty-one parking stalls and there is a hundred and fifty-plus vans there, which could potentially uh, carry two employees, where are all the cars for the employees going in addition to the vans themselves and, and?
They're anticipating that this three hundred and thirty-one parking space is going to be sufficient for the use. If it turns out not to be, I'm sure the town will be made aware of it, uh, but with that, we're asking for use of this parking lot. A maximum of two hundred, uh, delivery vans to be, uh, stored overnight. And they're, they're not anticipating any of the people coming in cars to leave their cars there overnight. Because that's how they go back home after they end their shift. Again, they've paid these, these deliveries go in waves. So you're going to have people starting early and being done early. You're going to have people starting later in the day and being done later in the day. Um, and I don't, I, as I was saying earlier, it's designed for this type of traffic flow when it was a college campus, because you would have people coming and going from classes much in the same manner. And we're not utilizing any of the other parking areas. This is just this parking area. And there will be no college classes going on. There will be no recreational facilities. The recreational facilities won't be used. So we're, that's what we're asking for. We're asking for a special permit up to two hundred vans. Uh, we could limit the hours. We could, uh, definitely not go out onto Flower, uh, Drive, Flower Hill Drive East. That gate will remain closed. We'll only utilize the, uh, the intersection with William Floyd Parkway that has had significant traffic mitigation measures installed to address the potential traffic coming in and out of that complex.
Alright, Mr. Kent, I wanted to, you to repeat what you've told us already. Mr. Mazarella, did you have anything further?
Uh, no, um, I appreciate all the information, and I just, uh, want to reiterate what one of the other board members said. You have to just appreciate from our angle in that fact that, uh, we, you know, have been, um, living with the fact that this was a college campus at one time, which I do understand now. There is nothing going on there. I also am very familiar with the area, having lived half my life probably a mile from there. And, um, the, the roadways and the, um, uh, arteries in and out of there uh, were done very well. In fact, I believe they were a result of some college, uh, um, urban, uh, training uh, as far as students actually having a part in constructing, uh, those, those arteries in and out. Uh, but again, um, just, um, you know, I understand that where the board is coming from is that this is a new endeavor. This is not a college, uh, campus any longer, uh, for that purpose. Um, and I would also, um, agree with my other board member, Mr. Lazaru, in that this is different than, um, air training. So it is something that I believe the, uh, this governing body will just, um, have to take a closer look at and, and try to absorb, um, this new traffic flow and, and the amount of cars that could be in there uh, or in and out in any, any, any period of time during these hours. But I do thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board on the application?
Yeah, just real quick, I need to ask one question.
Mr. Wisdom.
The mitigation measures, Mr. Kent, uh, that the, that the state or, um, town also, or just, I think it's the state that did this, um, had made to cross over the northbound lanes going in in the morning, coming from this, from the north and then going to the east. Uh, I've, I travel this road twice a day, every day. Uh, in the morning, it's not too bad going north, but on the way home, if those lanes start backing up, you're only have, it's a two-lane highway on, on the southbound and northbound. And then there's houses right across, there's right alongside of you, so, and a breakdown lane. So I could just see this thing getting jammed up in, at, at night, because this is where traffic starts to build, and it's only going to get worse. You know, and they're going to have to either widen it more onto the median so they could stack up on the median and then get their light and then go in. That's just a recommendation, I would think. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have two speakers on the case.
Thank you. Let's, uh, promote them now.
I have Tracy and Lorraine.
Alright, uh, Lorraine, I can see you, but you need to unmute yourself. And Tracy, I don't have audio or video yet.
Okay.
You, you, you've succeeded, you've succeeded. Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Just waiting for the other individual that was promoted with you. Tracy, we can now see you, and you've unmuted yourself. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Um, ladies, if you could please just give your attention to the board's attorney, uh, Mr. Doyle, we'll have you sworn.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole trip, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And the individual identified as Tracy, I see that your hand up. Um, did you, did you also respond in the affirmative to that question?
I do, I do.
Alright, Lorraine, I'm going to take you first. You were the first one to be promoted. Let's start with your full name, please, and your address.
Thank you. Uh, Lorraine Martino.
Thank you. Uh, Lorraine Martino. My address is two sixty five Forest Avenue and I am I guess perpendicular to Grand Avenue, which would be just like, um, the gentleman had said, we are six hundred feet away from the area and subject. Um, so I guess I have a couple of questions. Um, he had been speaking about the two hundred delivery vans and the training would go from six thirty AM to about twelve thirty PM. But the site is open from six thirty AM to ten thirty PM. Is that correct?
Um, uh, what the twelve thirty PM he was talking about was, um, noon.
Right.
Not not twelve.
Right, right. But that would be for the, he had said that the training of these vehicles would be from six thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. That's just, yes, the afternoon. But the facility would be open from six thirty AM to ten thirty PM. Is that correct?
I'll have that clarified for you. What are the questions?
So just in keeping with the fact that we are six hundred feet from this whole area, um, and the other gentleman was talking about the traffic. My concern is, is that we are go the noise with these trucks and the vehicles. So not just the two hundred delivery vans that are in there, whether they're, you know, offloading and and training and whatnot. But what one of the other gentlemen had said, all of the vehicles that are coming in for the people that are in there. So now you're talking double that. You know, if you're having two hundred vans and then two hundred drivers, so now you have and you have clearly enough spots for four hundred vehicles. What is that going to do to our surrounding neighborhood? As far as this this.
I'm going to let the counsel for the applicant respond to you. I will, I will, uh, just remind you that the testimony was that the, uh, that it would be two hundred at a time. It would be shifts of approximately fifty vehicles. There would be no loading or unloading at the site. But, um, memo, let me, uh, uh, Mr. Kent, if you wanted to, uh, respond further and then we'll take the testimony of the next, um, individual.
I think you did a good job. Uh, there's no proposed loading or unloading at the site. It would be uh, waves of people coming in, uh, to do some training. Uh, they would go over to Precision Drive, uh, if they do ride alongs with a trained driver. Uh, they would load up over on Precision Drive and go out for the deliveries. They would come up at the end of their delivery. They would come back to this site, park the truck and get into their vehicles and leave. And it would be coming in, it it wouldn't be all at once. Be over the course of a day.
I just had another question. One of the gentlemen had brought up the, uh, the influx of the traffic, especially going southbound. So right by, uh, the college, the Grand Avenue, uh, and William Floyd, there's the left turnoff there. There is no traffic light there, which I would assume that, well, your vehicles would access the college if they were traveling northbound to make the right turn in. But there is no traffic light there, which we have talked about with the town on several occasions. Uh, yeah, I think that's going to create a dangerous situation with people trying to turn from William Floyd onto Grand Avenue and vice versa, onto the opposite side of the street, which is, uh, Ridgewood and Rebelo. Um, you are now just increasing so much more volume of traffic between the the vans as well as the employees', uh, vehicles. And that's a concern for us because, uh, we have children in the area. So I was kind of curious, like, if anybody had any thoughts on that.
Um, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kent, did you, did you want to speak to that issue if at all?
Well, we're not making any turns on Grand Avenue. We're, there is a traffic light at the entrance of the complex. And there is a dedicated, uh, deceleration lane that severed that, uh, where people making a right turn would go into that lane. And it's quite a, it's quite a lengthy, uh, right turn lane there. I don't know. I I I'm not sure, uh, what a traffic signal like Grand Avenue would do would help you and your community to get out onto William Floyd. But we're not making any turns on Grand Avenue. We're not proposing any turning onto Grand Avenue.
Right. You would have to pass Grand Avenue to get into the facility. My point being was that there's no traffic light there and I I don't know if you've actually seen that, you know, come down and looked at it, but if you have to pass Grand Avenue to get into the college, uh, heading northbound, there are people that are heading south that are making lefts turns onto Grand Avenue from William Floyd. There is no traffic light there. And I just feel that the congestion with your vehicles will create just more of a bit of a dangerous situation because there's no traffic light. And I know that you have nothing to do with not having a traffic light there, but the fact that your company is looking to utilize this space that's pretty much been defunct for quite some time now. Once the college dissolved, uh, it's just a concern for for the the residents of the area.
I can tell you this, most of the traffic leaving the site will be turning right and heading north on William Floyd Parkway. And there is a separate, uh, right turn lane that comes out and then it's kind of like a ramp almost, an ex an acceleration, uh, ramp that leads you from the site heading north on William Floyd Parkway. So. That's the way.
I'm sorry.
Most of the, uh, the all the trucks leaving the site will be heading in that direction to go up to Precision Drive.
And you said these trucks are just powered by regular gasoline. Are they, they're not diesel?
Not to my dollars, they're not diesel. Uh, I've I've seen them. So most of them are the smaller version. I know they do have some larger looking trucks that kind of look like UPS trucks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've seen them in the neighborhood. So that's, that's a concern, the noise and the odor, depending upon how they are fueled. I know some you had mentioned about converting over to electric, but one of the board members had also mentioned that these are brand new vehicles. So that wouldn't really be something that would happen anytime soon.
No, I don't really know the answer to, uh, conversion to electric, but I, I was just commenting that I know UPS is going through a, uh, going through a conversion right now with a lot of their trucks. And I know Amazon is very, uh, environmentally conscious, so I I wouldn't be surprised if they started doing it also or if they haven't ready.
But for present time, I mean, I'd like to know, I think we'd all like to know how they are fueled, if it's diesel. Because that's an odor and then the noise concern, like I said, we are, we are the six hundred feet on Grand Avenue from your, your parking lot. So that's just another concern of of the.
I just want you to know that the board can condition any of its actions, uh, which may, which may include the manner in which the trucks are, uh, are powered. Were there any other issues that you wanted to bring up before I move to the next speaker?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending today.
I appreciate it.
Uh, we do have another speaker. I know that I saw the video go down on it. Uh, Mr. Vega, do we still have that individual with us?
I don't see her anymore.
Okay.
All right. If there's no one else to speak, and I feel bad she was promoted and came up, uh, it, did she return as an attendee or just gone?
Uh, she's gone. I don't see her.
All right. Is there anything further from the board on the application?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had one more question.
Mr. Burksen, of course.
So we're going to have a lot of drivers moving back and forth here. Is there, are there facilities at this location for these, for these drivers, either uh, break rooms or bathrooms and what, I mean, what's there that's going to accommodate all these guys and gals?
I don't think they're going to be on site for very long. This is not, this is not going to be something where they're hanging out there all day long. So I think they're going to come, they're going to, they're going to get some training. Um, and most of these vans are going to be heading over to the, uh, delivery center.
Okay.
Come in waves.
Thank you.
Come in waves, it's, you know, forty, forty people at a time. It's not, it's not a, uh, an influx of two hundred all at once.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Was there anything further from the board? If there's nothing further, I'll ask the board for a motion.
Move to close and hold.
Motion is to close and hold by Mr. Burksen, second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Kent, thank you very much. Board members, uh, the next interval calendar begins at four PM. I'll ask the board for a brief recess. Motion for a brief recess, motion and second, I've been made all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. See you at four.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm gonna send you a picture right now. Are we live?
We're live, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Just waiting for all.
Okay, just send it.
Just waiting for all board members to to return and we can continue with this hearing.
Anthony, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Charles.
Yes, Charles, I can hear you.
Somebody has blocked my video.
Okay.
I'm here.
All right.
Okay.
All right, do we have? I see Rick is returned.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
And we have J Mass, so we're ready to go, is there a motion to resume the hearing? Motion second have been made all in favor. Any opposed motion carries. Before we begin, for those of you who have just come on as attendees, I want you to all know that a number of cases have been adjourned from the 4pm interval calendars. They include case 25 Anthony Frick to January 13th. Case 37 of the holdover calendar of August 26, 2020, Albert DeLuca. Case 38 of March 25, 2020, Mohammed Iqbal. Case seven of November 18, 2020, Nessinger Wilti LLC. And go with me a second. Case number five of November 18, 2020, Dorothy Lufker. All of those cases have been adjourned to January 5. For those of you who are here and interested that adjourn date January 5 will not be a public hearing date. From that date, those cases will be adjourned to January 13 with Nessinger going to January 27. If there are any questions, please contact the Board of Appeals Office during business hours and we will be happy to explain further. There are requests from those applicants to adjourn, the board has accepted the request and already moved to adjourn the cases specifically. I know that there's great interest in that last case, just noticed in the name of Lufker, the request for a certificate of existing use, that case is not being heard today. It is be, it will be heard on Lori, January 13.
On Lufker is gonna be January 27.
January 27, the motion that, so that, so that if you are here as an attendee, those cases are adjourned, there will be no presentation, no, nothing occurring with those cases. There's no need to remain as an attendee. Again, for further information, please feel free to contact the Board of Appeals Office during business hours. The last case, cases three to six A of July 11, 2018, Landmark Properties was adjourned to January 27 also. With that being said, then we have resumed the hearing, we can resume with the 4pm interval calendar case number 19. Oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Cardy, one other thing. Again, for those of you who are just signed on, in order for the board staff to know which case you wish to speak on, please, if you haven't already done so, rename yourself to, with your name and the case number that you have interest in, so we know when to promote you during the hearing.
Case number 19, Roslin Rifle and Revolver Club, care of Lawrence Puccio, 876 Grand Boulevard, Westbury. Property is located on the south side of South River Road, 1365 feet north of Long Island Expressway, Calverton. Applicant requests renewal of special permit for rifle and pistol range.
Mr. Chair, I have Timothy Shea for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, I see that you are there just waiting for audio and video.
I unmuted myself.
Well, we can hear you now in the video.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have the applicant Lawrence Puccio, but he is actually on speakerphone, he's having difficulties clicking on, but he's on speakerphone with Mr. Shea's colleague Melanie.
All right, then we will, we will take that testimony once Mr. Shea has presented the case.
He's the applicant.
He's here for any questions or any testimonies needed.
Thanks, Tim. In terms of your video, are you having issues with it today?
Yeah, I haven't had videos that I've success, oh, here we go, start my video, let's give it a shot. Let's see if it works.
Is there?
I think we kind of liked it better the other way, but I'm still waiting to find you in all of my boxes.
I think we all can agree to that.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. All right, then, Mr. Shea, we, we do see you, we can hear you, we'll take your appearance for the record, please.
J Timothy Shea Jr., Suttilman Ballin, 100 Motor Parkway, Hopock, New York, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, this is a renewal of a special permit that's been expired for some time. How did you want to present this application?
I'll just do a brief presentation and then Mr. Puccio, if required, is more than happy to testify with regard to this application.
Thank you.
This site is located on the north side of the LIE and south side of Mill Road spanning between the two roads in Calverton. It is 27 acres in size.
Mr. Shea, let me, I'm sorry, let me just stop you there for a moment, I'm just concerned because what we see are, oh, okay, we do have, we have the, the surveys up now, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Not a problem. And has been utilized as a shooting range uninterrupted since 1962 with the first special permit being granted in 1972 when that code provision came into existence. There, it is a private club, it has 325 members. There is no walk-ins, you're not allowed to just walk in and, and access the site. It is not open to the public. The range areas are located on tax lots 19 and 18, which are on the southerly side of the lot away from South River Road, closest to the expressway. The properties to the east and to the west are owned by the state of New York and are unimproved. The property is located in the core Pine Barrens Preservation District. So there is going to be no development to the east, the west, the north, eastern, west or north at any time in the foreseeable future. The nearest residence is on the north side of South Mill Road and the shooting range itself is well over 1,000 feet from South River Road itself. There's been no neighbor complaints in the intervening years. And in fact, I think the neighbor, nearest neighbor is now considering joining the club. There's been no difference in the surveys from 1962, which was updated in 68 and 73, and the site has remained essentially the same. The Masonry Clubhouse was provided with a duplicate CO in 1975 and has not been changed. The clubhouse is 24 by 34. It has bathrooms, a couch, fireplace and a coffee maker. There are no sales of any merchandise whatsoever on the site. There are no sales of guns or ammo. There is no storage of guns or ammo on the site. There's no sale of any food or beverages. Members may bring their own coffee to make coffee or bring their own food, but they have to leave with it. Essentially, the site has remained the same, not only from the last special permit, but from the, from 1962 on, and Mr. Puccio is more than happy to testify to the same.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, let's, let's start with to see whether there's any questions from the board members. I think that might be Mr. Burksen, we're just waiting for his.
Yes, there is, I'm sorry. Tim.
Yes.
I just so that the record is clear, the nature of the operation of the, of the, of the club is gonna be consistent with how it's operated since in the last 40 years or so?
Absolutely, 100% consistent with what's been operating since 1962.
And how the, there is a special permit that expired, how long ago did it expire?
Approximately five years ago, I believe that they, maybe longer, I'm not sure, but there was a, an issue with regard to the prior attorney retired and did not indicate the expiration date. And then we had to get, there was some procedural issues in getting the application refiled and we had to arrange for a brand new survey of the 27 acre lot, which is deeply wooded. And we processed that application and got it in as soon as we could, once we found out that there was an expiration.
Okay, so how long were the permit, how long was the permit for that expired?
It was a five year, it was a five year permit.
And that's what you're requesting now?
Yes, we are requesting a five year permit.
Okay. As the, the number of members increased substantially since, over the last 10 years?
I do not believe so, according to the client.
Okay. All right. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Berksen. In reviewing the, the record from the prior. Issue with the special permit, I think it was seven years ago, we do note that the nearest, nearest residential property owner came in and actually spoke in favor. Of the special permit at that time. I think that's the one you referenced, considering to be a member. In terms of the, the ownership itself, has there been any change in the, in the ownership?
Now, the deed of record from 1962 is the same deed of record that is the last deed of record for the property.
And the principles of if it's a corporate entity, principles remain the same?
Yeah, I believe it's a membership, so it could change, you know, with the members coming in or out. But the corporate, the overall entity owning the property has remained as Roslin Rifle.
And further into the questions, Mr. Berksen was offering, in terms of the hours of operation or the types of. Guns or rifles, whatever the case may be, that are utilized there, has, has there been any change in those areas?
No, there has not.
All right. Is there anything further from the board on this application?
Oh, one other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Jim, is there, are there any state or federal permitting requirements to operate this?
There are no permitting requirements, other than people who have the guns have to be properly licensed.
Okay.
But the organization does not carry to the property itself, it carries to the members that frequent the, the shooting range.
So the, the state does not specifically regulate shooting ranges?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berksen. Is there anything further from the board? All right, this is a request for special permit. The board has the ability to grant a special permit for a maximum of five years. Unless the board, if there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to grant the application, the special permit for, for a period of five years. Type two action, second.
Motion is by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Case number 20, Albert Hanson, 26 King Road, Rocky Point. Located on the south side of King Road, 566 feet east of Apricot Road, Rocky Point. Applicant requests permission for proposed conversion of basement to habitable space on a 40 foot lot.
Mr. Chair, I have Linda Hanson, the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson, we see you're being promoted. We're just waiting for the audio and video. All right, are you able to hear us?
I am.
Very good. Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Okay, Linda Hanson, my husband Albert is the applicant. He's not here.
Ms. Hanson, let me just stop you there. I'm just, I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so that we can swear you in.
You saw him, he swore to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about to.
I do.
All right, then you've, you've, you've given us your name. You, you referenced your husband. What did you want to tell us about the application?
We are just proposing to finish our basement into habitable space. We need a variance that's only 40 feet.
All right, we, the board is familiar with the application. I'll ask the board if there are any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Yes, good evening. So can you be more specific as to the use of this conversion?
It will just be a finished space, a playroom, couch, living room and an additional bathroom.
Okay, so just recreational space for the family, there's no. No other living space or bed or anything like that?
No, there's not.
And where is the, is there a outside entrance to that basement?
There will be an egress window put in.
But no separate.
No, there's.
No separate entrance, the only entrance is from inside the house?
Yes, that's correct.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Ms. Hanson, this parcel, how long have you owned this parcel?
It just, it was just a year.
All right, in, in 2017, this parcel was before the board. For the addition to the rear of the house. And we grant, this board granted that application. And there was some, some conditions to that grant, then they referenced the shed and a fence in the rear yard. And I just want to point that out to you because they remain prior conditions of board action. And I'm not certain whether or not they were, they were met, meaning they wanted, there was a direction to, to move the fence to the property line. And to place a shed on the property. Apparently they, they were behind the property. I don't, I'm not sure what's behind you, but I just want to let you know that those were prior conditions that still have to be met.
Yes, yes.
All right. Very good. So if there's nothing further from the board, let's for a motion.
I'm chairman, I'd like to grant the application as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mazzarella, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Case number 21, Zero Alapurti and Jean De Pontes care of Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Located on the northeast corner Herbert Circle and Herbert Circle Patchogue. Applicant requests a height variance for a proposed 16 foot high detached garage. Six foot front yard setback and a 720 square foot. Was permitted as part of a prior BZA grant from March 11, 2020.
All right, so while, while we're waiting for Mr. Malguanera to be promoted for board members. What that means is that the only difference between this application and the prior grant of the board was the height of the detached garage. Is requested to go to 16 feet from the 14 feet that was previously approved.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Malguanera, we can see you, are you able to hear us?
I can.
Very good. Just if you could, please give your attention to the board's attorney so that we can have you sworn.
So I'm just going to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about to.
Yes.
Thank you. Just start with your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent for the applicant.
Thank you. And what did you want to tell us here?
So as you previously said, this is a prior grant for the location and size. We're just requesting two additional feet due to the fact that the owner intends to store his boat in said garage. And needs the height to, for the boat to store properly. Also, it just looks aesthetically better for the overall, you know, characteristics of the neighborhood. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Wisdom, we just need to unmute you. Very good.
Okay, so this, was this a prior grant that was, at one time, I believe it was?
It was, yes.
Okay, and that was in March of 20, correct?
Correct.
And, and he's, when he wants to add, would you say two or three feet?
Two feet to the height, just because it's for storing a boat and he needs the height to get the boat in.
Get it in and out of the garage.
Correct.
Yeah, I get it. I really don't have anything further, right? You know, I have a boat myself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lazarus.
Mr. Malguanera, what type of boat is this?
I'd be guessing if I knew. I do, I do not know.
He's asking for the additional height, but can he get it into the garage? Does this have a normal garage height door?
Oh, uh, I, it's, it was being designed and they said that he, he contacted me and said he needed two additional feet. The door might be a, you know, might be a foot higher than a normal door, just to, just to, I'm assuming to get in.
But I don't, I don't know whether or not that's, that's a plausible reply. But it seems to me that if you're going to have a normal height garage door and you're going to want more height. Unless, of course, this is a sailboat with a boom that's en, enmased. I'm just asking the question, what's the size of the garage door?
Absolutely. I, you know, I don't want to make it up for you. I mean, it, it probably is a little higher than the, than the normal garage. But the overall height is just going to be 16 feet, so it's not going to be, not a tremendous garage, you know, on the height, on the height front.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom. Second, it all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Case number 23, Daniel Corcoran care of Michelle Quitrally. 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, properties located on the west side of Lakewood Avenue. 558 feet south of Richard Avenue, Ronconkoma. Applicant requests permission for existing second story dormer addition and existing conversion of attic to habitable space. Front yard setback variance for existing 10 by 20 foot deck with steps.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Quitrally for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Quitrally, we can see you, are you able to hear us?
I'm muted, can you hear me?
No, no, now you're unmuted. That's good. Are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's start with, if you could just give your attention to Mr. Doyle, we can have you sworn.
So I'm just swearing to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about to.
I do.
All right, then, Ms. Quitrally, let's start with your appearance for the record.
Michelle Quitrally, 100 Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York, 11772, agent for the applicant.
Thank you. You appear just to be a little low in volume today. If you could just keep your voice up, we'd appreciate it. Talk to us about the relief being requested for the, by this application.
Okay, first off, Mr. Corcoran is the new owner of this property since March of this year. And it's a 60 foot wide parcel that conforms to 85372C. But we're asking to legalize an existing attic conversion to living space and a dormer addition. That were built sometime between 2006 and 2007, from what I can see from the aerials. The first floor is approximately 700 square feet in size. His second floor or converted attic with the dormer is around 550 square feet, making the overall house about 1,300 square feet in size. Not very large. I've submitted photos of the subject parcel, as well as the homes across the street, behind him, to the north, to the south. Showing that this request is not out of character for the area as a whole, and it conforms basically to the area. We're also requesting to maintain a, a 20 foot front yard for an existing entry deck. This deck is 10 by 20 in size. And as you can see by the photos I submitted, it adds a little character to the front of the house. It's not very intrusive, nor can you really tell that it's larger than the allowable six foot wide when you're passing by the property. So the board.
Thank you, Mr. Quitrally. Again, you, you, you seem to be coming in and out, as long as you can hear me, that, that's fine. So that, so that for us to understand, this is a basic, this is a, this was a one story house. It had a dormer and by this application, a portion of the attic next to the dormer was utilized to increase the size of the dormer. Do I understand that to be correct?
One story house and the previous owners converted the attic into livable space and added a dormer.
All right, and does this application seek, seek to enlarge that portion to add on to the dormer that the previous owner built? Or does it, it's just the, all right, so that this house ends, as proposed, and the house has two stories of habitable space. One with the dormer is in, in the ground floor. All right, in, in terms of the setback proposed by the, by the deck with steps. Can you talk to us about how that compares to the neighborhood?
I really didn't see too much in the conformity on the neighborhood, but as I stated, it's not that intrusive where. You can, it comes in your face when you're driving down the road. The setbacks have been approved before by this board. I have one from October 12, 2016, case number six for Dominic Bonaduce. You gave a 20 foot front yard for a, let me see the size of this deck. It's a 10 by 18.3 foot with a 20 foot front yard. So there's another one here that you were granted an eight foot front yard back on. Or May, June 15, 2011, case number 28.
Or in, in terms of, because now we're on the island and not on Fire Island, in terms of this application. Oh, it is Fire Island.
No, 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 this is.
It is. So the proximity of those two, those two grants to this house is what?
The first one is in Bellport and we are in Sheldon for the application. And the other one is in Lake Ronconkoma, so.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Vega, can we just pull up the aerial so that we can, that we can have an opportunity to look at the front, on your setbacks?
I just want to say, if you go to the either end of the road, the one on the expressway or the house on the expressway or on Union Street. Same side as my clients, their houses are less than 20 feet to the front yard.
And that's, and that's what, that's what I was looking for. In terms of the photographs that you've given us, did, are those part of them?
I know they are not, but if you pull up on your aerial, you can see them very easily.
All right, thank you very much for pointing that out.
You're welcome. I can try to get your.
Is there? That, that's fine. I do have also indication in the town portal of what's identified as pending litigation involving. Basement conversion. This application may, may be, may be made to clear, to clear that violation up. Maybe you can give us some light on that, Mr. Doyle, maybe you can look in. If I gave you the complaint number, could you identify what the status of that is?
Right. Our application right now is for the conversion as well as interior alterations. And outside cellar entrance to an unfinished basement. That bait, that violation was part of my client purchasing the house. It was a finished basement. He has now stripped it, now totally empty. And we are trying to rectify all the situations from the previous owner.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle, in terms of the, the status of that prior litigation, are you able to give us any information?
Basically, bragging, talking, internal notes about saying. What I can say is that this trial is a description of the events with certain people, with a previous owner, there are certain issues, appears to be. Exactly the situation and what brought the litigation and there were the whole CO issues on the property that needed to be addressed, so. Sorry, that is what we certainly brought them.
So that.
So, yeah, this, it seems to be a testament, yes.
So this, this application, if approved, will then clear the, clear the violation. Thank you. Is there anything further from the board in the application? If not, unless for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to grant the application as presented.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 24, Frederick and Elena Raffo care of Michelle Quitrally. Properties located on the northwest corner Cherokee Avenue and Adirondack Drive, Sheldon. Applicant requests permission for existing detached garage exceeding a 600 square feet permitted, 634 square feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Quitrally for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Quitrally. You are still with us. You've previously been sworn. Let's take your appearance for this application.
Del Quitrally, agent for the applicant, 100 Colonial Drive in East Patchogue, New York, 11772.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell us here?
Basically, we're asking for permission to maintain the 634 square foot detached garage. Where 600 square feet is required or allowed. The detached garage has been in existence since early 1990s without any incident. It's maintaining the proper setbacks. It's just slightly over the square footage that's allowed. It conforms to the neighborhood. It's 14 feet tall, conforms everywhere else. I mean, I believe it's oversized due to the way the, if you look at the photos, the way the, the roof is, it's got some overhangs.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Ms. Quitrally, how are you this afternoon? Ms. Quattrali, how are you this afternoon? A little, a little lower in volume, though, I guess. I guess your speed, your microphone isn't close enough today.
I'll come closer.
That's better.
That's better. Okay, so you said that the garage has been there since the nineties, you said?
Around nineteen nineties or so, yes.
Okay, and it is utilized as a garage, correct?
I have submitted photos of the inside, and yes, it's, there's no second story. There is some storage up there, but you have to climb on a ladder to get up there. It's just rafters. It's definitely a garage.
Okay, now your statements, your, your testimony stated that the, it's possible that the surveyor went off the eaves instead of, or the overhangs instead of the actual foundation of the garage?
I'm questioning that, because it doesn't look like it's, it's only thirty-four square feet over. So I, I'm not quite sure how that was taken, but it's so minor.
Nonetheless, we're here to give that relief. Is that correct? Okay, speak to me about the second driveway on Cherokee.
When my client purchases house, that's been there as well. We are, I have a, a letter into the highway department to see if they have previous permits. If not, we will be getting another highway work permit for it.
Okay, and is there, is there a garage on that side of the property as well with the, with the, in the resident itself? Or was it an attached garage?
There is an apartment on that side. And that apartment's been there since two thousand and two or before. We're rectifying that as well.
So you have also an apartment that you need to take care of with permitting and so forth?
Yes, we need to renew.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, do we have anything from the law department regarding that apartment, sir?
We, we do have in the portal complaint number one-nine-one-one-zero-seven-seven-zero-three, identified as non-compliance. Mr. Doyle, I probably will need you to clarify this further for us. Also, I have data violation, January nine, two thousand and twenty.
I'm not sure why it's not in compliance. They have a permit that expired in two thousand and two, and that may be the reason we are, we have an application into the accessory apartment now.
Was, is a conditional discharge out? They also sort of, this is like as part of that, because there's also a building permit. So it looks like they already went to the building department to clarify that issue, and I'm sure this issue came up when they were going to the building department.
All right, so I understand that this is an attempt to, to clear this prior violation. Because there is a conditional discharge out, I'm going to, on this one, ask for, when we make the motion to make in conditioned on the resolution of this complaint number. So Ms. Quattrali, when you show them that you've resolved it, then...
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I suspect that when they got permits to address the other issues, this is something that they saw on the survey, because this wasn't part of that student, but so they are already in the process of coming into plans. I wanted to make that clear, because this is flagged in addition, you know, the department will find other issues when they see them. Either you're coming in for X, they will see other things sometimes. And that's probably what happened here.
All right, then, Ms. Quattrali, did you have anything final to add?
No, not at all. We are, other than we're trying to bring everything up and to legalize everything, the property.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vega, I'm assuming we have no speaker?
Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers for this.
All right, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented, subject to the resolution of the aforementioned complaint number, and subject to the highway permits, subject to the applicant seeking a highway permit for the second apron, if necessary.
Thank you. The motion is by Mr. Kuna. I'll take the second by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor? Any opposed motion carries?
Case number twenty-six, Robert and Donna Madalovich, care of Christine Nicole, eighteen Railroad Avenue, Center Riches. Properties located on the west side of Sycamore Avenue, one thousand and six feet west of Blue Point Road, Farmingville. Applicant requests height variances for existing four-foot-high retaining wall with six-foot-high fence on top, bearing and height from seven-point-four-two feet to ten-foot-high along West Property Line. Existing five-foot-high chain link fence located in front yard, front yard along East Property Line. Existing five-foot-high chain link fence located one feet from two-foot-high retaining wall along West Property Line, seven-foot total height. Existing two-foot and four-foot-high retaining walls located less than the required double distance from each other, six-foot total height. Four-foot-high retaining wall with six-foot-high fence on top, located in front yard, bearing and height from seven-point-four-two feet to ten feet high along South Property Line. And for existing six-foot-high chain link fence located in front yard and less than the required six feet from a two-foot-high retaining wall, eight-foot total height.
This is Chair, I have Christine Nicole for the applicant.
Thank you, Christine. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also have the applicant Donna Madalovich.
Thank you. Ms. Nicole, we can see you, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
All right, you just heard that we have your client here also. Is that to monitor, or did you want us to promote them?
No, that's good. I mean, they, they're going to want to speak.
They're going to want to speak. So let's, let's promote the applicant themselves.
Okay.
She's promoted.
Thank you. So we can see you, are you able to hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
All right, so then I'm going to ask you both if you can give your attention to the board's attorney, and we'll swear you both in.
Certainly. I do. My name is Christine Nicole, agent for the applicant.
Sir?
I do.
Very good. And could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir, Robert Metalovich. I reside at forty-five Sycamore Avenue in Farmingville.
Thank you. Ms. Nicole, what would you like to tell us about this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Metalvich have lived here for sixteen years. They've been very diligent in obtaining permits for all their improvements on their property. I've done many of those. Their retaining wall that was built recently was after years of soil erosion. However, it got so bad that my client hired a contractor to build retaining walls so that further erosion onto neighboring properties was controlled. He was not aware, as most people aren't, that retaining walls need building permits. He happened to mention to me that he handled his problem, and that's when this came up, and he asked me to represent him in legalizing these walls. The retaining walls vary in height around the property. I think the photos speak for themselves rather than the surveyor's measurements and that long-winded denial list, which who would ever know that you need so many feet between a fence and a this and a that? I mean, it was, I got seven denials before I could come in front of this board, because everybody that looked at it had something to say. This was really difficult to get to this point. Also, the wall varies in height all around the property, because obviously, it was built to hold back erosion in different points on the property. From the road, nothing can be seen, because the street ends at my client's property line. The cul-de-sac was dedicated to the town, but was never installed by the town. We have gotten permission from the highway department to leave the fencing and concrete pillars and gates in the right of way with an easement. The south property line that meets the west property line is the highest area for the wall and fence. You need to realize that this property is higher than all surrounding properties in the area. All surrounding properties are all lower than our clients, my clients. And erosion still occurs on the north and east property lines, but is not affecting the neighbors at this time. The neighbors that have been affected by this erosion are very happy that something was done, and they support my client totally. These walls, Mr. Chairman, are not out of character for the area. We're in Farmingville, one of the highest points on Long Island. This is near Blue Point Road, which has severe dips in the road, signs that say, you know, no visibility. The retaining walls on many properties in the area, including front yards. This is an extremely uneven area, as is Rocky Point, but this is, is pretty severe. I have additional photos to show the board. I don't know if you can see it, what it was like before he added the retaining wall. He found this. I don't know if you can see that, but he found a photograph showing how badly it was deteriorating into the neighboring yard from the street, on another street. The retaining wall, although seems extremely high, is pretty much invisible. You can't see it. It's way in the background. You can't even see his retaining wall, because his property dead ends, and then, and then, only if you go into his driveway, would you be able to see these walls. You can't see it from a neighboring property, but again, the properties are deep, and it just looks like a fence in the backyard. So it could not be avoided to add these walls to this property. So if the board has any questions at this time, I'm available, and so is my client.
Thank you, Ms. Nicole. Before I send the case out to the board for questions, Mr. Metalovich, did you want to add anything else to that presentation?
Not really. This has just been an ongoing thing for me, and ultimately it came down to the safety. I have three kids that run around the yard, and the erosion was starting to be so bad that it was causing deep crevices in the ground, and the amount of dirt that was going into the yards was just, it was something I couldn't allow into the neighbor's yard. So ultimately, I went through a lot of options, stone, landscaping, wood barrier, anything I could do. This ultimately was the only thing that could hold due to the, due to the, the grade of my property. This was basically the only thing that could hold back the rainfall and everything from, everything going into my other's yard, neighbor's yard.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My first question is, was this done by a licensed contractor building wall, and was it engineered? And do you have the paperwork to prove that?
By engineer, do you mean how it was built?
Yeah, how, was it, did you hire an engineer to design the wall? Because you have a six-foot-high wall in areas, and one of the big problems is it's not built properly, and then it falls down in in seven years from now. Was there French drains put in? Was it properly tied off into the ground behind it?
So now, I apologize. So not, not knowing the, this is, this is all new to me on how these are built, but I asked the contractor, who is licensed, been in the business for many years. From what I observed, they had a base of crushed stone that they used. They had a drainage system. They used the eco-tarp against the wall to allow for drainage. I, they didn't mortar in between the segments so that the water can dissipate evenly, so that it would not build pressure. Each individual stone, to my knowledge, is approximately four thousand pounds, so they're not going anywhere, and...
So are they considered, what kind of block is that, that they're four thousand pound stones?
It's, it's a poured cement cast. From my understanding, they, they have a nickname of, they're called mafia blocks.
Mafia blocks, okay. Now, how are you, call mafia blocks. Now, how are you pouring the water out? Is there PVC pipe, hole, drilled holes into that mafia block, so the water is able to leave the retaining wall, or is the water just building up behind a retaining wall, so down the road it could push forward?
So as I was watching the construction, they used a, it's a corrugated drainage pipe that allows, and it's pitted, so it allows the water to enter the pipe, should it build at the base. And it's also the fact that they allowed the segments in between the rocks. Should it build on top of it, it could just pour through the segments.
Okay, were there any pictures taken of this process of the building of the retaining walls?
Yes. I'm sorry, I did not give them to my expedited, but I do have them.
You do have them?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no complaints from the neighbors?
My, my neighbors, they love it. They, it's a, it's a complete overhaul to their backdrop to their properties. It's a, it's a, the poured segments actually have a stone look to them. So they're more than happy that I, that I resolved that issue down at the corner.
And I would also like to add that we are getting the wall engineered. I don't see a problem with it. I have an engineer, Carrie Casel, lined up, and she's going to engineer the walls. He does have photographs. We'll be able to do that.
How is she going to engineer the wall if the wall was already built?
Well, first, she has photos of it being built, and then she has a way of figuring out if it's going to stand up. I've done this many times before on retaining walls that are existing, and we have an engineer come, and they, they do some sort of a test to see, or they see the way it's constructed, and they'll, they'll give us a letter, or they won't.
Okay. Okay, you know when that letter will be available, Nicole?
Well, as soon as we can get through this board, we, in order for us even to get a building permit, we have to have that. So we will be getting that, yes.
So, speaking as one member of the board, Nicole, I would like to see the engineering report and the pictures before I okay the wall. You know, it's hard to okay the wall without pictures and an engineering report, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I do understand what you're saying, but even if you were to grant this, if the engineer says it's no good, then we can't keep the wall up. So really, at this point, it's, if you were to see some of the pictures, can you see this one? I mean, this is one view from it. You can see that it's stone. I mean, it's not just a retaining wall that can break down as far as wood. It's been an extremely expensive retaining wall, and I have showed the photographs already, and I was encouraged to come forward with this to the zoning board.
Christine, I have to apologize for calling you, Nicole. I said, I meant to say, Mr. Cole. Okay?
It's okay, I'm used to it.
It's a, bad on me. I would like to reserve judgment on this until, unless the chair has a better idea, or the board has a better idea.
I'm almost certain, if I can interrupt you, Mr. Lindsay, that Mr. Kuna will tell us that
I'm actually waiting here, sir.
At the time of the building department inspection, if there's any question about the integrity of the wall, all of these things will, will be need to, to be produced to the building department to their satisfaction.
Exactly.
So in terms of the variances, I think that that we need to, that, that, that's, that's our focus here. Mr. Kuna, I'm interested in what you're going to follow with.
Mr. Chair, I'm actually going to follow with that, I'm impressed that at least it is a manufactured stone, because a great deal of those manufactured retaining walls already have, as long as they're installed within manufacturer specifications, already have engineering approvals and are usually taken in by the building department as valid engineering approvals. So a lot of these manufactured systems have been approved by the town of Brookhaven. This one, if, if they're asking Ms. Nicole for a, for an engineer, that's, that means that they want to see something, and they're going to go back and approve it, and they may even ask further than what the engineer does, which is, you know, dig a section of it or show it to us. We want to see the retaining mesh or the, the, the fabric.
And I also think the point here is the, the variance relief is for height. In granting a height variance, the board is not vouching for the integrity of the materials or the manner in which they were installed.
Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's a combined wall height.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It was a really difficult site. When I saw the survey, and I mean, the survey went back five times. The denial was done seven times. I went to the site and go, wow, this is not as bad as it looks on paper. But then, when you realize, walking around the property, he's the highest piece of property in the middle of all these properties, so he has issues, and he addressed the issues. Yes, he didn't get permits. A lot of people ignorant to that, but he did do a very good job. And again, I, I'm assuming they're going to want a letter, because anything over four-foot-high, they always want an engineer's letter. So I've already prepared Carrie Casel to do that, so...
All right. In, in terms of Mr. Lindsay's request, I am not opposed to it, if that's, if that's what one of my board members wants, or if there's a consensus among the board members. This is, this is an already existing condition, so it's not waiting on any specific action of this board to exist. Mr. Lindsay, did you want to comment further?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Mr. Kuna for that, for the comment. This is a typical thing of this board complimenting themselves on taking care of each other and helping each other out. We do not understand the situation. taking care of each other and helping each other out. We do not understand the situation. And I would like to go forward with the application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazarus.
From a professional standpoint,
Yes, sir.
An architect and a structural engineer. You engineer a wall before you build it. We need to see engineering for that building, for that wall. You'd have to tear that apart to find out whether or not there is a base return to hold the earth from tilting the wall out. So uh, I suggest we see the engineering first before we make any approvals for this.
Mr. Cooney just left the meeting. Oh, he's back, okay. Uh, and I, and I have no difficulty with that. Again, these walls exist. If the board um, is interested in seeing the engineering um, uh, and the construction photos, I have no issue with that. I, I, the issues that, that I thought were important, I've brought up already. If, is there any further comment from anyone?
Well, for me, I was just going to say that I'm here for the height. All right, the construction will be addressed by the building department and by the planning department also. They're involved in this also. We got the highway involved for the front. Uh, we have the planning department involved and we're going to have the building department. They will address that. I'm here strictly for the fact that it's existing and its height and how it fits in with the neighborhood. So again, if you guys feel uncomfortable and you want to hold it, I, I don't understand how that will change a decision on the height. But whatever you do is fine with me.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen appears to be interested.
I, I think that given the, the nature of the testimony that we've heard and the procedures that are established, well-established in the town between planning and building department, that uh, we should limit our review here to what we do is in terms of a variance with respect to the, the height that's being applied for. Uh, I don't, I don't uh, if I look at pictures, if I look at pictures, then I'm not going to know anything either. It's, it's up to those engineers and uh, in, or the technical people in planning in the building department to determine whether or not this is a, an appropriate structure and appropriately constructed.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
It's Lindsay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Burksen, for your comment also that, that I agree with that also. I also agree with Mr. Lazarus on his thing as the
Why aren't you agreeing with anything I say? That's the question.
Well, Mr. Chair, you seem to be agreeing with everybody.
Uh, well, I, I, I support all of the members. We are here only for the height. The integrity is not our, within our realm. The integrity goes to building and planning.
Sure, like I, I would like to go back to my original thing about Mr. Kuna. Thank you for his comments and I would, I would like to make a uh, make the most as possible.
All right, well, uh, if, if there's no, if there's no, is there anything further from the board? Then I'll ask the board for, Mr. Doyle.
I just wanted to echo against anyone in the board, just that the board understands that um, the height is only, the only the height will go in before us, but there are other processes in place that will make sure that it's built properly before it gets to sale. So people, if we get the height, it's still gotta go back to the building department and still go.
Let me give Mr. Lindsay an opportunity to thank you for that. No, all right. All right, if, if, I'm sorry. If there's nothing further, further from the board, I'm going to ask for a motion on this application.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the variance for the height on the wall. Um,
Well, be careful, don't be that specific because it's for fencing also. So I think you're, you're moving to grant the application as a type two action.
I'm moving to grant the application as a type two ac- action and would also like to include the engineer's report in this somehow. I don't, so.
Okay, so, so um, so this is what I'm going to do to try to best appease all of um, the inquiry here. I'm going to ask the board for a motion to close the application subject to receipt of uh, the documentation that Ms. Nicole was referring to and upon receipt, uh, the board will um, will, will resolve the application um, by motion. Ms. Nicole, does that sound acceptable to you? You don't have to come back, but whatever it is that you're going to have, you'll submit to us.
Want us to provide you with an engineer's report? I have no problem with that.
All right, and I don't see a need to hold open a hearing for, to have you and your client back. In all fairness, I can close the hearing subject to the receipt of that. The board can um, review it. It, we're not holding up uh, the uh, construction of a wall because it exists already.
Thank you.
All right, and, and I think that resolves everyone's some concern about the application.
Everybody happy.
All right, so making everyone happy, I would move to, to close the application subject to the receipt of the engineer's report. Uh, is there a second to the, to the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Metelovich. It's very nice to meet you.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-seven, Dana and Kevin Wood, care of Andrew Malguanera. Property is located on the north side of Saddle Brook Lane, two hundred and nine feet west of Saddle Brook Court, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Malguanera, you, we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
I can.
Very good. You previously have been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record. I'm getting a little bit of echo. Now, I'm not sure where.
Okay, can you? All right. Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. What do you want to tell us?
Well, we have here a basic uh, uh, small garden shed, uh, twenty feet from the property line, uh, has no adverse effects. I uh, when a client came to me, we, you know, we kind of said if it can be moved, that, you know, we could just move it, you know, easily. But he said it's kind of nestled in there and on, on a slab, so it'd be uh, detrimental to the move. He chose to go for a variance and here we are. It is set back uh, far from the street and again, has no adverse effects. If uh, if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
It's Lazarus.
How long has the shed been there?
About three to four years.
Three to four years? And you say it's on a slab?
Correct.
And it would be a hardship to move it?
It would be. Yeah, I, I, you know, again, I, I, you know, told, I, I, that was my first recommendation and it just wasn't uh, it hit, you have to, you know, pretty much get rid of, get a new shed. So we chose to go for variance for it.
Well, it's just, since it's nestled into the side, it seems to fit. Otherwise you'd have to put it into the area that's clearing.
Exactly right.
Nonetheless, any examples in the neighborhood?
Uh, there are many sheds in the neighborhood. I don't, it has no, you know, adverse effects.
Okay, I have no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Was there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yeah, grant the application as presented, type two.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-eight, Joseph Guerrero, care of Michelle Catrally. Properties located on the north side of Bayview Avenue, six hundred and fifty feet west of Ocean Bay Boulevard, Ocean Bay Park, Fire Island National Seashore. Applicant requests front yard setback and minimum and total side yard variances for proposed second story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Catrally for the applicant.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Catrally, we see you. Uh, are you able to hear us? Uh, we don't, we don't have um, no audio yet, although you're not showing us uh, that your audio was off. Uh, well, whatever you just did, you should do again because the audio came in then, then went out again. I'm sorry, I don't have anything yet. Do, do we have anything from the pines? Uh, I think you're back. No, no, you're good. Now, you just, um, your, your voice is very low. Just, just keep it up as, as loud as you can.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I apologize. Um, I also have a speaker on this case.
Thank you. Ms. Catrally, so that uh, try speaking again for us so we could see where you are now. Yes, we can. Very good. You've previously been sworn uh, on this application. Just start with your appearance for the record.
Okay, Michelle Catrally, agent for the applicant, one hundred Colonial Drive, Matthew of New York, one one seven seven two.
Thank you, Ms. Catrally. Uh, you are here for setbacks uh, pertaining to a second story addition on the parcel. Is that, is that what it is?
Yes. We were here before this board on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, case number thirty-eight. And we were granted our variance request for a second story residence addition. Um, and I'd like to make those minutes part of this record if I could.
Yes, motion, and does the board have a motion to incorporate the minutes of the prior proceedings?
I'm moved.
Motion sent made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have that incorporated record. Uh, tell us the difference or why you're back with this, the application then.
There really is no difference. Uh, we're back requesting the same variance uh, for the same square footage. Everything is the same. It took over two years to get Suffolk County Health Department approval for the new IA sanitary system that Mr. Guerrero ha- has to be installing due to the increase in the footage. Um, and he still wishes to raise the roof on this, his existing two-story dwelling to increase the size of the bedrooms upstairs. Um, and to do this, we had to come before the board for a minimum side yard setback of four point two feet where the eight feet was required by code and a seventeen foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required by code. And as you can see, the existing house and structures are maintaining those setbacks. In fact, the deck is maintaining a sh- uh, smaller um, east side setback than the four point two that we're requesting for the house. Um, we're not encroaching into the established side yards or front yards. There already is a second story on most of the house and we conform to the surrounding homes, which are all two-story dwellings. Uh, we received a no objection letter from Fire Island, Fire Island National Seashore. And um, if the board has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Catrally. Questions from the board?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Burksen.
Michelle, the four point two, I know this was granted, but I had a question about it. The four point two is a further intrusion into the side yard than the current structure is, exists?
Not at all. We're not encroaching at all into the established side yards.
Okay, so the, so the side yards haven't changed?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. The record should also reflect that the board has received a no objection letter from Fire Island National Seashore. Is there anything further from the board on the application? All right, then we do have a speaker. Um, Mr. Vega, if you can promote that individual, please.
Mr. Chair, I have been uh, told by Mr. Brinkat that he has no question.
Thank you. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll note the application is subject to chapter eighty-one of the code and I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the application uh, type two. Type two.
Second chapter, chapter eighty-one, motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number twenty-nine, Pat, Matthew Gershony, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the east side of North Road, four hundred and thirty-one feet north of Newton Boulevard, Ronkonkoma. Applicant requests minimum side yard variance for existing carport.
The chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Malguanera, you're back. Are you, you're able to hear us?
I am.
You are. Okay, then why don't we start with your appearance for the record, please?
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
We have here is a carport existing twenty-five, roughly twenty-five years. Uh, there is no garage on the property, so uh, it's necessary for uh, for their cars. Uh, there's been no adverse effects. The side yard setback is typical with the area. And uh, if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
How are you, Andrew?
Good, Jim. How you doing?
Good. So um, can you just uh, give me some of the details of the carport, how it's constructed and the materials that it's made?
It's wood. It's wood, footings in, in the, in the uh, in the ground. Um, it looks, it look, it's been there for twenty-five years. It looks pretty well-built. You know, it's not falling down. You know, we had uh, we sent a
So would you say it's more like a uh, like regular uh, traditional construction? Like you would construct a garage, but only has no walls?
No walls, exactly right.
Basically has your typical pitched roof with uh, tar shingles and
Yeah, it's, I, I, I think it's, I believe it's flat. Um, more or less, maybe angled ever so slightly for, for rainfall, but uh, yeah, it's not, it's not quite pitched.
Okay, and uh, and again, a traditional type roof?
Correct.
As materials go?
Absolutely.
And it, and it's open on all sides?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and uh, all right, I'm assuming twenty-two feet. So what, they can get two cars under there? Maybe more?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, grant the application type two.
Motion is to grant this a type two action by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Lazarus. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number thirty, Donald and Danielle Dermody, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the south side of Middle Road, one hundred and nineteen feet east of Bergen Lane, Blue Point. Applicant requests side yard variances for proposed shed located in the required side yard and for proposed covered porch. Front yard setback and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool and permission for said pool to be located less than the required twenty-five feet from overhead wires, six feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. You were still with us. You've previously been sworn. We'll start with your appearance.
That's Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
Uh, so we have a unique lot here in the sense that the house is set uh, as far back as it is. Um, and the cess pools, as you can see on the survey, are on the side of the property. Uh, so this pool is located pretty much the only, only place it can be. In this instance, it is set back far from the street. There are a lot of uh, other pools inside yards in the area. If you look at the aerial, um, the shed, the shed is, you know, barely in the side yard technically because the house is so far back. Uh, it is three and four feet from the property line. It is only twelve by twelve, one hundred forty-four square feet. Um, and the front porch is, you know, the benefit to being uh, as far back as the house, as the house is, the porch is significantly uh, you know, distance from the street. Um, if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board? And that should be Mr. Wisdom. Yeah, you just have to unmute yourself. There you go. Mr.
All right, so with the shed, that's common in the neighborhood. From what I could see on the aerial, there are sheds uh, quite a few locations.
Yes, the shed and the pool are both common.
I believe that there's a piece of property right next door that has a pool also. And it's very close. It's a round pool above ground. It's very close to the side yard.
Correct, and, and across the street as well.
Yeah, and uh, if I'm not mistaken, it looks like there's another pool, uh, another pool to the left. I can't really see it that well, but it does look like there are some pools in the area. Right around the corner, there's a pool that's right up against the rear fence of the house. I see that. So uh, would you say this conforms to the neighborhood? I know it's a tough neighborhood. There's a lot of different sized plots.
Right, yeah, it absolutely, I believe it absolutely conforms and there are a bunch of pools on the side yard. Um,
There are. Them and the uh, rear yards also. Uh, all right, regarding the covered porch, how long has the porch been there?
It's proposed, so.
Okay, it is. So, and it's, is that covering half of the concrete patio? Is that what that's going to do?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I think the concrete patio is probably going to go um, in lieu of this porch and then uh, yeah, I mean, it is, it is fifty-five feet from uh, the property line and Middle Road is is a significant right away from the uh, property line to Middle Road as well.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
I heard Mr. Cunha first.
Yes, Andrew.
Yes.
I, I have an issue with the, with the location of the pool, and that is that I need, I need to advise you of something. And that is that all cesspools and all septic tanks have to be a minimum of 20, I mean, 20 feet away from any built-in pool. As per Suffolk County Health Department, so I would, I would encourage you to look into that. These are only two feet deep. They may have a, they may have some sort of way around it that way, but in general, their general rule of thumb is 20 feet from any, from any swimming pool.
Okay, we will, I mean, I absolutely, we will check, we will talk to the health department and have to do anything required, whether by engineer or what have you.
Yeah, because you're, you're really close. You're less than 10 feet on, on one of those rings, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Understood completely, and we will, I will absolutely speak to my client and make sure he addresses that as well.
Okay, thank you. That's nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Yes, Mr. Burksen.
Andrew, I'm sorry, if Jimmy addressed this, I didn't hear it. The, the location of the wires in the pool, did we run a hot wire test?
Yes, yes.
And there's a letter from PSENG?
You don't have it?
The documentation?
I could get, I have one, so I could get, I could get, if, if, if you don't have one, I apologize, but I could get you a hot stick test, you know, after the-
But, I mean, the test was performed or you?
It was performed, yes.
Okay, and you can provide the office with a copy of it?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Why didn't you do it now?
All right, so, so was there anything further from the board? Mr. Malguinera, as far as I understand, when we are closer than, is it 10 feet? What's, what's the board's policy? Lori, 10 feet? Less than 15 feet, so less than 15 feet, we need, we require the stick test. So you'll need to provide that to us. Is there anything further from the board on the application? If there's not, the motion will be to close and hold subject to the receipt of the stick test. And then once we get that, we can decide the application.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, and we'll take that second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 31, Robert Martyr and Dawn Friedland Perez, 12 Woodstork Drive, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the north side of Woodstork Drive, 385 feet east of Village Drive, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anybody for this. Earlier, I see that Spectacular Pools placed the application, but I do not see Mr. Dieter Speck in attendee queue.
All right, then what I will do is if there is anyone in, as an attendee that was to present this application, if you could just alert us through question and answer or the chat function, please do so. I'm going to just move on to the next case and we'll come, return to this later.
Mr. Chair, in the next case, I do have the applicants here, but also the next case is, was brought in by Mr. Dieter Speck of Spectacular Pools.
Is this, you're talking about case number 32 now?
Correct. Melissa and Alan Weinstein, I have both of them, the applicants, but I do not have their representative.
All right. All right, so then can we, can we, oh, Dieter Speck is here, so to see that, just see that on chat, let's bring him up and we can, we can start with 31.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm promoting him. He's under the name of Dawn Dwyer. I will rename him.
Thank you.
That is why I did not know that he was there.
Yeah, he has an alias. Now we have to ask him about that.
You sure will.
Hello?
Yes, Mrs. Speck, now we can see you, we can hear you also. Are you able to hear us?
I hear you perfectly, yes.
Excellent. I'm going to ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
You saw him, he's going to tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, I do.
All right, then let's just start with your appearance for the record.
My name is Dieter Speck. I live at 10 Honey Court, Bohemia, New York.
Thank you, Mrs. Speck. Mr. Vega, can we get the survey up for this application? All right, then, what, what did you want to present to us here?
I've built many pools in this neighborhood and most of them require variance. I've submitted a copy of the approval letter for, for variance for eight feet on one of the pools I did, just in the same neighborhood, but I've done numerous variance applications in this. The yard is tight, we're fencing the pool so that their kids have a little bit of, you know, just more safety. But that's, as you can see, there really is no other place to put the pool with putting the fence where I'm putting it.
Thank you. Is this a, a, a pod development of some type where there's common spaces? That way the lots are, are this type? And as a result, you are here, as with other residences in the same development because the backyards don't have sufficient room for the pools?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, and it looks like you're, you're trying to center it, eight-foot rear, eight-foot side to the house is 27 feet. Is in terms of the board's actions in this community in the past, have we granted similar setbacks?
Are you asking me or the board?
Oh, yeah, no, Mr. Speck, I'm asking you. You mentioned that you've built other pools in-
Absolutely, and I, my office submitted a copy of an approval letter to the town yesterday. I don't know if they gave it to you, but we gave it-
Well, with the setbacks in that prior board action?
Eight.
That should, that's what you're proposing here, is that correct?
That's correct.
Or is there anything further from the board on this application?
Mr. Chair, proposing six feet.
I see eight. Eight, eight and 21.
I got the wrong information. Okay, Mr. Chair.
I think you're looking at-
Oh, you know what? Yeah, that's 32. This is 31. We're going to talk about that six feet eventually. But, but these are eights. We do have, by the way, we do have receipt of that, of that grant letter, and it's part of the file, Mr. Speck. Is there anything further from the board on this action and this application? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application type two presented.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 32, Melissa and Alan Weinstein, 122 Namki Road, Blue Point. Applicant, I'm sorry, located on the southwest corner of Railroad Avenue and Namki Road, Blue Point. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool.
All right, then your appearance again for the record, Mr. Speck.
Dieter Speck, my address is 10 Honey Court, Bohemia, New York.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell us with regard to this proposed pool installation?
It's a tight yard, as you can see. Once we put the fence in off the front of the house, we're only going to be about four foot six from the fence. So it's not a very big pool at all, and only a 14 by 28 pool. The filter site meets code, but the pool obviously does not. My client spoke to both neighbors that are affected, and they're both fine with it. The only neighbor, one neighbor to the west just had a question about the fencing, and that was, answered their question, and they're fine with it.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Good evening. How are you today?
Good, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The, are there other pools, first of all, in the area that are this close to the property line?
I looked on, I looked up and I found one approximately five houses down on Railroad Avenue. I believe the house number is 84 Railroad Avenue. It's approximately six feet off the property line, which the house is about five feet, five houses west, if you head west down Railroad Avenue.
Okay. Just looking on the aerial, see if we actually have it, but I don't see it. Okay, and do you know if that was by this board's action?
I do not know that. I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, and I did state this to Mr. Malguinera before because I see that you're showing also the drywell. You may have to check with the health department.
We're 18 feet from that, and if the health department requires us to move it over two feet, that's easy to do.
Well, then if you move it over two feet, you're going into the backyard, so your nine feet now becomes-
No, we would just move it away from the pool two feet. So we'd be, we'd not move the pool. We could move the drywall if we had to, two feet, if they wanted-
Relocate the drywall?
If we had to. I mean, it's a drywall, it's not a cesspool, so I don't think their concern is, I think is more septic, not the runoff from the gutters, which is what that is doing.
I just wanted to make sure you took that into account.
I got it.
And I see that you have absolutely no backyard on this home.
That's correct.
And you have letters, you said that you had either a statement or a letter from the neighbor or just?
I don't have a statement or a letter, just verbal. I spoke to my client before the meeting, and they had conversations with both neighbors in there. The one that, which is six feet off the property line, that's their driveway. And they're excited about having the pool and, you know, the neighbors, they get along. That's the reason why they bought that house is because of the neighbors. So it seems like there's a very good rapport with their neighbors and looking forward to having pool parties.
And is that the one to the south? I'm assuming from our aerial is 114?
That is to the south. Both neighbors, south and west, have no problems with the application, and yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Now, you do have a large 24 setback from the house itself. Is that, is that, is that the number I'm seeing here?
Let me just put a rule on that real quick. Take me two seconds. Yeah, it's more like 20, 22. There is a stoop coming off the house. It's, I don't know if you can see that in the diagram, but there's steps because the, the, the door is elevated. So there's a fair amount of steps coming down. Once you put a dinner table there, a barbecue and two lounge chairs, that's going to disappear from 21. So like, the lounge chairs are maybe two, three feet off the, off the pool.
From, okay, so the patio pavers are remaining that you're showing right there, the-
Oh, it's going to be, we're going to be tying everything in together.
Okay.
Probably like blue stone stepping stones or something like that, just to, you know, so there's not just stepping on grass.
And what's your distance to the paver patio?
Water's edge is eight feet.
Okay. All right, no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have, I have the applicants. I don't know if they had anything else to add.
You can promote them if you'd like, Mr. Speck. Did you have a conversation? Do you know whether or not they intended to speak?
I know they're listening to the meeting, but they're not connected. If I had to, I could call them with a question, but I think they don't need to speak unless you need to, you know, unless you have a question for them.
I have no further questions for them. Let me ask the board, is there a motion on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for all your time.
Let them know that we apologize for not speaking with them, and you may be gone, Mr. Speck. Okay, go ahead.
Case number 33, Cheryl DeGroot, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the north side of Phyllis Road, 98 feet east of Monroe Drive, Mastic Beach. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing one-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Malguinera, your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. This is case 33. What would you like to tell us?
So we were in front of this board over the summer for the side addition. It turns out, it was, the front addition was added as well before my client's ownership, so we were not aware. And the old survey that's on file with the town is, was very, you know, blurry, so we couldn't really see, tell that that addition was in fact added. But it was, and now we're back for, for the front addition. Just extends the living space to the house. It's in the front of the property, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Malguinera. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Could you explain exactly what you said again to me?
So, we were here for the, we were here for the side addition, and, you know, same, the house is as is, not realizing that the front addition was added at some point, you know, prior to my client's ownership. So when filing for the permits, the building department didn't realize it either, and then they realized, oh, that addition was added. Needs to be addressed, but it needs to go to the zoning board, and we didn't address it at the last hearing. We did address the fence, you know, the way it angles in, but we did not address the actual addition itself.
So you were here for the fence originally and not for the addition?
We were here for another addition on the side of the house.
Okay. So the surveyor did not put that on the-
The old, the old survey was, is not the best quality, so we couldn't tell that the front, you could tell that the side addition was added because it's completely missing, but the, the quality of the old survey, you couldn't tell the front, there was that little portion added to it because, because it was an old survey, and we did not realize it was added until we went to apply for the building permits.
So when did you realize it? When did, when was it added? Do we know when?
It's been there, you know, I don't know the exact date, prior to my client's ownership, 15 plus years, I would, I would estimate it.
So they had to come back twice for this, now you're telling me?
They had to come back for the front addition, correct, so it was not picked up by myself. And we are addressing that now.
All right, what do they use that for?
It's just living space to the front. This is the front of the house, you know, just living room.
Living room. Did you supply any pictures of that?
Uh, right, possibly.
Possibly. You would know. You have a secretary that would know that?
If she was here, I would, I would ask her, but most likely, it's in the probably background of the, of the sign photos.
Ms. Corey, do we have photos in the file?
No.
No, submit them. This is, this is normal. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
It's, Chair, I'd like to close and hold.
Second.
All right, then, Ms. Lindsay, can I ask you, would you like the photographs?
Yes, I would, Mr. Chair.
All right, so then we'll close and hold subject to the receipt of the photographs. Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Andrew, if you could just get us the photographs, we'll have a decision at the next turn.
We'll do, thank you.
Case number 34, Grace and Michael Boyle, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the west side of Beechwood Drive, 475 feet north of Shady View Crossing, Manorville. Applicant requests height variance for existing retaining wall varying in height from 60 inches to 78 inches high. 72 inches is permitted.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Thank you. Andrew, you're still with us? Again, you've been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
Andrew Malguinera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. So the retaining wall is approximately six feet, I'm sorry, six inches over code permissions. What did you want to tell us specifically?
These walls, again, predate my client's ownership, you know, although not addressed, it, you know, being at the property, you could almost say it had to have been there when the property was built, as the property behind it is above our property, but it was never addressed, and so we're here to address the same. And the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazaru.
Hold on a second. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Malguinera, the hand annotated numbers like six foot, six foot, twenty foot, fifty foot, and seventeen are the lengths of the wall.
Correct.
You're right, okay.
Yes.
And there is no indication of any spot elevations or any slopes here, which is really good to have on any survey when you're trying to determine where the top and bottoms of the walls. But I assume when we say the heights of the walls would, would resemble a dimension from the finished grade to the top of the wall. So they, they vary obviously from sixty to seventy-eight inches high, where seventy-two is permitted. So if you take sixty and seventy-eight and take away the remainder, you get eighteen inches and you have nine. So in actual fact, the average height of this wall is sixty-nine inches. Would that be a good assumption?
You're probably better at math than I, I just, just kind of went by the surveyor and, you know, better safe than sorry kind of thing.
I'm trying to help you here.
I understand, I understand, we understand. I appreciate it.
Okay.
He was getting you closer to the seventy-two inches.
Yeah, I appreciate that, no.
I was wondering how you were gonna respond.
Yeah, so that's what we're looking for. It's just, I think it's an average height. I don't think this is extraordinary to that point, and I have no more questions.
Thank you very much. That was, that was entertaining, Mr. Lazarus. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
We have the application as presented.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number thirty-five, Craig and Jennifer Claven, eighth Sky Haven Drive Patchout. Located on the east side of Sky Haven Drive, one hundred and eighty-eight feet south of Mercedes Court Patchout. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Chair, I have an Andrew Brom for the applicant.
Mr. Brom, I see that you're being promoted. I don't have audio or video on you yet, though, if you can take care of that for us. We have the video, the, there you go. Sir, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
We can. Thank you very much for attending. Let me ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney. Let's, Mr. Joy, are you with us?
I do.
Very good, sir. Let's start with your name and address, please.
Good evening, Andrew Brom, one nine two four Bellmore Avenue. Bellmore, New York, one one seven one zero. I'm an engineer and agent for the applicants.
Thank you, sir. And what would you like to tell us about this application?
Good evening. The applicants, Jen and Craig Claven, number eight Sky Haven Drive, were seeking a variance to maintain the existing shed with the variance for the side yard setback where the eight point one is existing and fifteen foot is what's required. The applicants found out that this shed was not in compliance after they called for a final inspection for their swimming pool. They filed the pool, got everything approved the right way, and at that time, the building inspector had told them that the shed was not in the correct position. After this time, it was already landscaped. They already brought power to it. They also had like a ramp custom built for it. I submitted some photographs. Does the board have access to put that on the screen?
That's according to when they were submitted, sir. And we're taking a look now. Excuse me, at the file.
Mr. Brom, were they submitted through email or were they submitted with?
Through email today. So if it didn't get a chance to get there, I could continue with the presentation without the benefit of those. If you don't have them.
If you have a PDF and like to email me right now, I can place them up.
What email would they go to? Well, let me see if I can do without it. If you look at the survey where the shed is highlighted there in yellow.
Yes, sir.
It's eight point one, and if you notice, this is what my picture was gonna show. The shed is actually off on an angle. So at the opposite corner, it's actually grows to a distance of eleven point five. So where we requesting eight point one, we're requesting from eight point one to eleven point five. And that was what those photographs would show.
All right, sir.
Also submitted a, two letters in support from the both next door neighbors, but more importantly, the next door neighbor that is adjacent, right where that shed is on file. We emailed in a letter of support for that.
All right, sir. Was there anything further?
I just want to let you know that in the variance, it's, it's not a substantial variance. Then other neighbors don't have any concerns with it. I don't feel it has a significant impact at all on the neighborhood. And we would respectfully request your approval to maintain the shed in its current location.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, very briefly.
Yes, Mr. Burksen.
Okay, so, so how long has the shed been there?
It's been there approximately three years at this point.
And they, they installed it as part of the, the reconstruction of the backyard with the pool?
Correct, yeah. And they hired, like, let's call it a landscaper that put the shed there, and they were unaware of the code requirement that, where it had to go.
And you say they've landscaped around it and a ramp. Now, you said there was electricity there. Any other utilities other than electricity?
Not at all.
Okay, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Burksen. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Brom, I'd like to see that your letter in, in support and photographs get to the file, because we've mentioned them and they're part of the record. Can you identify the email address that you sent them to?
Yeah, um, what is, let me, let me, I'm gonna switch my screen here, so I hope I don't lose you when I do this. It was, uh. I actually could forward those to you right now. They were sent to Licardi. L I C C A R D I at Brookhaven NY.gov.
All right, so then, then we just need you to re-mail them to us.
I can send them right now.
Name wrong. All right, but too many people are talking at once. I need you to re-mail them to us, and we're gonna give you the correct email address.
Go ahead, I'm ready.
So it's L R I C C A R D I at Brookhaven NY that gov. So it sounds like you were missing the R previously. But if you have any question or that doesn't go through, please call the Board of Appeals Office tomorrow. Having said that, is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, do you, I would be prepared to approve the application. Do you want to wait till we receive the documents?
No, we'll have an understanding that we will send the decision letter out once we receive those documents. Received.
Subject to, to, to that reservation and move to approve the application is submitted type two.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Brom, then it's, it's, it's on you now to provide that information for the, for the record. So the board's decision letter can be released.
I just asked you to repeat it. I'm gonna write it down my hand. Al?
What I'm gonna do, because I just want to move the hearing, is give you the, the Board of Appeals phone number, four five one six four seven zero, six four seven zero, six four seven seven. I think any of them will work. But if you just call us during business hours, we will, we will ensure that you will send it correctly and we will receive it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can, through the chat feature, I'll send it to him right this second.
Very good. So, so if you stay on with us through the chat feature of this program, Mr. Vega, we'll provide the information that you're looking for.
Thank you, and I'll forward it right away. I got it.
Okay, case number thirty-six, Peter Byworth, care of Sharon O'Brien. Fifty-four Miller Place, Middle Island Road, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the east side of Highview Boulevard, five hundred and eighty feet south of South Country Road, Brookhaven. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Sharon O'Brien for the applicant.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Good evening. You can hear us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Good to see you. Let me ask you to just take a moment to be sworn in by the board's attorney.
Yes, sir.
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Very good. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
I am Sharon O'Brien, fifty-four Miller.
Sounds good. Thank you. And what would you like to tell us about this application?
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, I am here as agent for Peter Byworth, the homeowner. The subject property is an improved parcel, fronting Highview Boulevard with a hundred and twenty feet and a hundred and twenty-five feet of depth in the hamlet of Brookhaven. We are before you this evening seeking permission to install a small in-ground swimming pool, fourteen by twenty-eight in the rear of the property. This location was chosen for several reasons. As you can see from the aerial I provided you with, the yard has many mature trees that would have to be taken down if another location had been chosen. Also, in twenty nineteen, we took out a building permit, permit number nineteen B one two three five one seven, to square off the rear of the dwelling, which is not reflected in the survey we filed the application with. Also, there is a bathroom on that side of the house. Whereas, when you exit the pool, you didn't have to walk through the entire house with your wet clothes. I have submitted a letter from the pool company, supporting our request and explaining why they recommended the pool being positioned where we are proposing it. I have also submitted a letter from the neighbor contiguous to the north, supporting our application and pictures of the mature trees separating the properties as a barrier. I like to add, on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, the HDAC gave the approval on the proposed construction. We feel our request, our requested relief of ten feet when fifteen feet is required is a minimal request. If the board has any questions, I will try to address them at this time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
Good evening, Ms. O'Brien.
Good evening, sir.
So Anthony, if I could just get that aerial back, please, and maybe you could bring it up a little tighter. I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Mr. Mazarella, let me, while Mr. Vega is doing that, and you're, you're preparing for your questions. I just want to just bring up this one issue. Ms. O'Brien, you mentioned HDAC approval. I do have a letter dated December eighth, two thousand and twenty from HDAC. Have you, have you, did you receive it?
December eighth. The approval letter that I was referring to was February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and then we. Back to the house.
All right, so this application, this application before the board with the requested variance was reviewed by HDAC and by correspondence dated December eighth, two thousand and twenty, they provided the board input directed to me. Ms. Corey will read it for the record. I apologize, Mr. Mazarella.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, the HDAC recommends denial of the requested setback variance for the proposed pool. Based on the information received, please note that the HDAC approved a plan for a pool size and location that did not appear to require a variance. And it appears to the HDAC that the pool could be cited such that a variance would not be necessary. The HDAC recommends complying with the HDAC approval for a smaller pool or situating the pool further into the backyard to accommodate the setback. The unique character of the fireplace historic district stems from centuries of being agrarian enclave and overbuilding on small lots detracts from this character. Any revision to the proposal needs to be resubmitted by the applicant to the HDAC for further review and consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I did not receive that letter. I would have addressed it if in fact I had received it.
I do, I do understand you would do that, yes.
Yes, sir. The only thing that I can say in support of where we placed the pool is with the addition that was put on the back of the house and the decking that was also put there, that that was the ideal place for the pool. Also, because of the mature trees, the pictures that I submitted on that side of the house was the prime location, because it did not have the mature trees in the area that we were proposing.
All right, then. I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure how you would have attempted to resolve this with them. You are showing us a fifteen-foot rear yard setback, which is conforming. Your request is for ten feet where fifteen is required in the side yard. I do see the fence extends beyond the pool, so that certainly looks possible to extend or enlarge that side yard. Whether it be fifteen feet or something between ten and fifteen, let me, let me just give the application to Mr. Mazarella for questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So Brian, I'll just echo what the chairman just stated. You know, we're dealing with five feet here, and it doesn't sound like an awful lot to, you know, avoid the problems of dealing with the HDAC and having to deal with this variance. I don't know how critical to your client that five feet is, and I don't know where that exactly brings you, because it's very difficult to see where that tree line is from just an aerial.
What I would suggest, if the board could hold it open, this, hold this case open, I will take better pictures of the backyard, so you could see exactly where the steps that come off that particular area would impede putting the, the pool further into the interior of the lot. If the board would be receptive to holding it open, I'd be more than happy to provide them with better pictures of the rear yard.
I have no issue with that. And Ms. O'Brien, you might want to consider providing the same photographs or document the, those issues with HDAC, because they're, they're, the future coming from them may be that they have no issue with the, with the application before the board.
Yes, sir, I would definitely address that. And like I said, I would have addressed that issue prior to doing the presentation.
All right, so if, if that's your request, I can hold you open until January fifth, understand the application won't be heard on January fifth. We will then move your application into January thirteenth to, to, to return for your, for your continued hearing. Do you understand that?
I would certainly appreciate that, and my client would appreciate it also.
Thank you. Is there any further question or comment from board members at this point? And is there a motion to hold this over until January five? Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Case number thirty-seven, Roger Rao, twenty-six Maymont Lane, Stony Brook. Located on the south side of Maymont Lane, one hundred and ten feet east of Marwood Place, Stony Brook. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for proposed first and second story residence additions. Front yard setback variance for proposed six point two five feet by twenty-five foot roof over porch exceeding the six foot permitted encroachment.
Mr. Chair, I have the applicant, Mr. Roger Rao. Thank you.
Mr. Rao, I can see you, sir. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir, I can. Hello, everybody.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for attending this hearing with us. May I ask you just to give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle, so that we can swear you in?
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth about the trip.
I do.
Thank you, sir. Can we just please start with you stating your name and address?
Here, Roger Rao, twenty-six Maymont Lane, Stony Brook, New York. Roger Rao, 26 Maymont Lane, Stony Brook, New York, 11790.
Thank you, sir. The board is familiar with the application you've brought. Will you seek relief, minimum and total side yard for additions to the house? Looks like you are slightly enlarging the first floor and putting a second story over it. Is that in its simplest form, what's going on here?
That is correct. Yeah, we're looking for the living space because basically we outgrew the house.
All right. And we do have the photographs you provided. What else would you like to tell us?
No, I think one of the concerns that we're running up against is it's a four-bedroom cape today, two bedrooms upstairs, including the master, and two bedrooms downstairs. I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, and right now they're sharing a room. And we're a little hesitant of moving downstairs and keeping them up by themselves or vice versa. So we're proposing an additional bedroom upstairs for my second child as well as additional office space because now I work from home.
Thank you, sir. Questions from board members? And that would be Mr. Wisdom. Yes, sir.
Good evening. All right, looking at your, your your survey, so what, did you extend the house to for an existing third floor dormer?
No, sir. There's no basement. It's just to extend the existing second floor.
Oh, okay. And permission?
Right now it's a cape and would like.
Okay, so the second story residence addition is going to be used for the kids. How many kids do you have?
Two kids.
Okay. And a year, and you got the rear yard variance for existing one-story, so you're bumping it out in the back?
Actually, no, the back is staying the same. The front will be bumping out to get level with the existing garage.
The house?
Yes.
A few offsets. Okay. So you're going to hold a, you're changing the side yard variance also, a side yard?
That's correct. The side yard facing east.
Yes, I see that. So it's mainly for the children because you need more bedroom space?
Yeah, the children and, and an office. Right now my office is in my kid's playroom downstairs, so as of COVID, I work from home permanently now, so I'd like to build an office up there as well.
So it's not out of character with the neighborhood?
No, not at all.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chair, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Rao. Good luck to you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Case number 38, Salvatore Andana Lakova, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the north side of Noble Street, 673 feet west of Blue Point Avenue, Blue Point. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition, permission for existing third-floor dormer addition, and permission for existing second-story residence addition.
Mr. Chair, I've received a request from Mr. Malguanera to, if we can move this to the last case of the calendar, he has the last case. His client is stuck in traffic. Not a problem. He also has case 39, though. And does he want us, oh, no, he's not going to move that? No, he's here. Okay, very good. Yes.
Case number 39, Christopher and Alyssa DeVere, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the south side of Alma Avenue, 325 feet west of Linwood Street, Selden. Applicant requests permission for existing conversion of attached garage to habitable space.
Mr. Malguanera, we see that you are back. This is case number 39. Your appearance, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you, Mr. Malguanera. What would you like to tell us here?
So we have here is a carport that was converted to a garage. Standard for this area, pretty much half the houses on Alma have the same thing. It is, there are no setback issues as there is a good amount of property to the side yard. And if the board has any issues, please let me know.
Thank you. Mr. Cunha, I'm going to ask that you take this one, if you could, please.
Sure. How are you, Mr. Malguanera? Nice to see you again. Okay, now, this, this is an inline ranch that had a garage or an attached, I'm sorry, had an attached carport that was then enclosed. Is that correct?
Yes, to a, to living space, correct.
And in the area, you said that there are more houses that have the similar, a similar layout and?
Yeah, this, this house is pretty common for the street, and most houses had a carport of some sort that were, that was then converted.
And I'm looking at the front setback on the aerial right now, and it seems like your house is actually setback further even with the carport. The setback further than most of the others in the neighborhood. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cunha. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I, I, I'm looking at the attendee list, and it looks to be significantly long for just three or four cases left for the hearing. I just want to remind everyone that a number of pieces were adjourned prior to the hearing. The Germans were made at the hearing. Case names Anthony Frick, Albert DeLuca, Mohammed Iqbal, Nessenger, Wilty Landmark Properties, and Lufker. The certificate of existing use application for Lufker. So if anyone is here waiting as an attendee for any of those cases, they have been adjourned. You can inquire through chat or question and answer for the dates or contact the Board of Repeals Office during business hours. Mr. Chair. Mr. Vega. I have either an applicant or an expediter for every case remaining except for case 42. I don't know if anyone is there for case 42. Andrew Malguanera is, okay. All right, very good. So then we can continue with case 40.
Case number 40, Isabel Milo K., care of Woodhall Expediting, 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the northeast corner, White Birch Circle and Central Boulevard, Miller Place. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed detached garage to be located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vito, good to see you. Can I ask you to just give your attention to Mr. Doyle to be sworn in?
Yes.
Your song is where to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very, very good. Can we start with your appearance, please?
Sure. Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting, with offices at 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York.
Very good. Mr. Vito, you are proposing at this location a proposed detached garage.
That's correct.
Why don't you tell us about it?
Okay, so my client, we are actually legalizing a partial garage conversion and proposing to convert the other part of the garage, which is why there is a need for the detached proposed garage. It is a two-car garage. We have located it to stay in line with the existing home. And although it's in the required side yard, there is actually a row of hedges on the side of that property, which would be the north side, shielding it from the neighboring property. We, we don't have full elevations yet, but we do have a concept plan, which I wasn't able to submit because I didn't have it, but I could show it to the board, which I'll show right now. I don't know if you guys can see that. Can you? Yeah. There you go. So that's the concept, just a two-car garage. The purpose of the little bump out that you see on the footprint is really just for aesthetic purposes. They just didn't want it to be a box. They wanted it to look a little bit more dimensional. But it is, you know, a maximum of 14 feet high, so it's just a one-story, two-car garage. And we did find some comps in the surrounding area that were similar for the setbacks. There also is a home in the neighborhood that has a very, very similar situation. It's 49 White Birch Circle, which is just about a block away. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Lindsay.
So the one that you just spoke about, was that okayed by the board?
I'm not sure. I actually didn't get the foil back, so I, that's inconclusive for me.
Okay, that seems to be a common question. People always bring that to us, and I'm not sure if it was proposed by the board, proposed to the board. Second, did you say you, you, you're here just for the proposed garage, right? Not for any?
Yeah, we're just here for the proposed garage, but once we get through this phase of applications, we'll be applying to the building department to legalize an existing garage conversion and, and proposing the garage conversion on the other side of the garage, which is why there's a need for the detached garage because they're no longer going to have a functional garage if.
Okay. Saying the garage is only going to be 14 feet? High?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct? Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? Mr. Vito, my only question or area of inquiry is just from the street view of this. Will the garage conversion include the removal of the existing garage doors?
Yes, it will.
All right, because we're placing a structure fairly close, making those garage doors look silly because they're unusable for a car. And that's, that's, that was my only concern. And the garage, garage doors in the proposed garage then will be, I think that would be facing west, but certainly towards Central Avenue.
The, yep, the garage doors will be facing west towards Central Boulevard. And the existing garage doors attached to the home will be removed and replaced with siding and perhaps windows as there'll be living space.
Very good. Thank you very much for clarifying for us. Is there anything further from the board? If not, does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application type two as presented.
By Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number 41, Walter Pradaco, 48 Vineyard Way, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the south side Vineyard Way, 197 feet west of Mount Sinai, Quorum Road, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing generator located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, Diane Moje for the applicant.
Mr. Chair, recuse.
Thank you. The record should reflect that Mr. Cunha has recused from the application. Ms. Moje, we can see you. Are you able to hear us? I think you're still on mute. There you go.
There we go.
Very good. Thank you. Good to see you. Let me ask you to be, ask, give your attention to Mr. Doyle so we can swear you in.
Your song is where to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Very good. Let's start with your appearance, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Diane Moje, DNI Expediting Services, with offices located at 779 Horse Block Road in Farmingville. Will be for the board today, seeking permission for side yard setback for an existing generator that does not meet the minimum of 25-foot side yard setback. I believe that we have approximately 12 feet, the side yard property line, and the generator has existed for several years. I would suggest that the granting of this variance would be conforming with the surrounding area, and it would not create any detriment to the surrounding area.
Thank you. Does the board have questions? Mr. Wisdom.
Sorry, and how long has it been there, the generator?
I, I know it's been there for several years. I can't tell you exactly, looking at the photographs. And I do apologize because I'm, I'm doing this from home. I'm not in the office, and I don't have the, the file in front of me. But I would say that it's been there for at least five years.
Is it safe to say they started regularly because that's what they're supposed to do? And are there any complaints because of it?
We have not received any complaints. As a result, the applicant came to me to legalize his property.
I have.
There are some other items that we're legalizing but didn't require variances from this board.
Okay, so there's been no complaints or anything like that from anybody?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Other any other generators in the neighborhood you know about?
It's hard to tell by the aerials, and, you know, they are so low to the ground. You're talking about they're only about three feet tall, so even as you ride the neighborhood, they're usually behind fences and behind bushes. So it's, it's kind of hard to tell. I'm going to say that this is, you know, where we were doing variances for front porches, you know, every other case. And now we have generators because everybody's of the mindset that they're going to lose electricity and need generators, so. It seems to be that it's becoming very popular.
Yes, it is. So, and this one is, is it, is it a Generac with the cover over it, or is it a generator with the cover over it also?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't really hear that.
Well, most generators have a cover over them, so you can't hear them. It muffles the sound. Is it like a Generac? That has the cover on it?
Yeah, it does have a cover on it.
Okay, so it's not as loud as everybody would think.
No, no, it's not like one of the generators that you use for camping where it's very loud and loud. No, it's, it's hooked up to the house. It's, it's hard piped in, and it is encased.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Chair, make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Mazzarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Record will reflect. The motion carries five in favor. The chair will abstain, and Mr. Cunha has recused. Five in favor, one abstention, one recusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Case number 42, Gary and Suzanne Delaraba, 71 Mary Avenue, Rockonkama. Located on the west side of Mary Avenue, 443 feet north of Mill Road, Rockonkama. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. Thank you. There we go. Mr. Malguanera, you are back. This is case 42.
Yes.
Your appearance to the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us here?
So Sun King is looking to install this pool. As you can see, it's a tight, tight yard. There really is no other location to put said pool. We're asking for a six-foot rear and six-foot side, maintaining the 10 feet required from the house. This, it's not a typical of the area. There are other houses around the street that have similar setbacks, 77 Mary, 83 Mary, 84 Mary. They all look similar to what our client's asking for here. And if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you. In the course of this hearing, we certainly have dealt with tight setbacks for pools. This parcel, though, 90 by 100 kind of regular in shape, I don't see any issues with regard to, to grading the, the shape of the pool and the size of the pool requested in part are dictating the side yard. So in the, in the course of your preparation for this, did you discuss with the applicant the possibility that their side and rear yards may need to be increased slightly?
I told them, yes, absolutely. I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know, I don't, the 18 by 36 pool, I don't believe is a tremendous pool, but they can.
If it was oriented differently and they affected that paper patio slightly, you could easily do an eight, an eight scenario here. There's a bump out at the back of the pool. It's a nice curved area, but it certainly, it is affecting the setback. So are you able to amend to, at eight-foot setbacks?
I spoke to the, the pool company, and they said they, the pool, the other option for the pool, and they, they did, they completely understand where you're coming from. They said they can, the other type of pool they could put in here without, without breaking up the patio would be, would, would, would hold a seven and seven, you know. without without breaking up the the patio would be, um, would 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 hold a seven and seven, you know, um. I I don't, I don't, I have to ask them about the the eight and eight.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
Yeah, I just scaled Mr. Malguinara's survey, and he actually, the drawing shows a pool that's actually almost forty feet long at its widest point. And I mean, at its longest point, and it's at its width is twenty feet at its widest point. So he can actually steal some from the actual drawing.
So, Mr. Malguinara, did you actually do the drawing yourself?
I was not. I did not. I didn't. I just came into this. Swim King actually prepared the application.
All right. In in that instance, it appears as though they may be able to get the pool they want and still hold the eight-foot side yards if I'm in rear yard, if I'm hearing what Mr. Cunha is saying. Why don't, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the board to move in that direction, and if Swim King can't do it, just ask us to reconsider. I just think that on that type of that dimension and size parcel that it's it's.
I respect, I respect.
Sounds like they can do what they're doing.
Completely respect what you're saying, and I appreciate it.
All right. Is there any any further comment from the board on this application? So I'm going to ask the board.
Do you have a letter?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Ricordi.
Um, it's an email from Victor Perez of seventeen Hester Lane, Lake Rockonkama. And he writes that we have no objection to their request for rear and side yard variances for the pool.
All right, so Andrew, that's that's a positive, but I'm going to make the same motion again. If there's any issue with it, you will send us a request to reconsider. Motion will be to grant the application with an eight-foot side and a foot rear. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Berksen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's one more. What do you want me to stand behind you?
Um, yeah. No, I would go to forty three, and then we'll take forty four and thirty eight together.
Case number forty three, Neil Ambrosio and Teresa Susco, care of Woodhull Expediting. Properties located at the west side of Cedar Road, two hundred and thirty three feet north of Hickory Road, Rocky Point. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing conversion of sunroom to habitable space. Front yard setback variance for existing seven foot by eleven foot deck with step.
Mr. Chair. Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Vega.
I have Madam President of Woodhull Expediting, Amy DeVito.
Thank you.
Is that is that MP DeVito? Yes, Mr. Vito, good to see you again. You previously have been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for this application.
President Amy DeVito, Woodhull Expediting, offices at ten thirty one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven.
Thank you. What would you like to tell us about this application?
Mr. Chairman, my client, this this property has been in my client's family for many, many years. It's actually the largest lot really in the entire neighborhood. The the variance in question is for the rear addition, which is actually a converted sunroom to living space. There is a CEU for the sunroom. The footprint has not changed. It was just converted to living space, which is why we're before the board today. So there, like I said, there is a CEU, so that means that this addition existed prior to nineteen fifty nine, and the footprint has not changed since that time. It's just the interior of the structure that changed. We did find similar comps in the area for this type of setback in the B one zone. But again, this this is one of the larger lots in the neighborhood, and we don't feel that, you know, the encroachment would create any detriment to the neighborhood as it hasn't for the past, you know, six years or so years. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lazar.
Hold on a second. Okay. President DeVito, um, the sunroom. I see the property is 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 quite deep. I said, since it's got a large frontage, but if you hold it to the North Arrow, it is a pretty good sized piece of property.
Mr. Lazar, I am so sorry to interrupt. Can you just give me one moment, please?
The president has to take care of the dog.
Yeah.
Madam President.
You have to tell him be quiet. Prudence, tell him be quiet. Mr. Lazar, that was Vice President Prudence.
I'm loving all of this. This is so good. Anyway. The sun, the sunroom conversion to re to recollect isn't existing. It has happened before. In other words, the sunroom was converted. It is existing. It is in existence as a converted habitable space. So it was done before, right?
That is correct. And the convert occurred in the mid nineteen nineties.
Okay, and what was it converted to? Bedrooms, living room?
Sitting area, like a den.
I see.
I I was in, I was actually in the home, and it was just a sitting area, a couch and a table.
Okay. Um, and the other item is the deck at the front entrance is just to the right of the asphalt or to the north of the asphalt driveway.
That's correct.
When was this done?
That was, well, it it, there was really always a stoop at the premises to enter the building. It was widened a bit with some decking and railings in the early two thousands to accommodate the applicant's late mother, who was actually in a wheelchair at the time.
I see.
That was in around two thousand.
Okay, and it is typical wood construction with stairs leading up to the platform. Is that? Is that the entrance of the house or not? No.
It is. That's the entrance of the house, yes.
It is the entrance of the house. Okay.
Yes, typical, it's actually, it's actually a cement platform, but it's it's encased with wood, wood railings and wood stairs.
I see. Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar. Was there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application as presented.
Second.
A motion is by Mr. Lazar, was seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. This is Madam President signing off.
Bye.
Good evening.
Good night.
Case number forty four, Anthony and Courtney Denmead, care of Andrew Malguinara, located southeast corner Lincoln Road and Jane Avenue, Patog. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-story residence addition. Side yard variance for existing deck, side yard variances for existing trellis on top of said deck, and existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Chair, Andrew Maganera for the applicant. Very good. Thank you. Andrew, you're back. We just need you to unmute yourself.
About that.
Very good. We'll start with your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguinara, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. On case number forty four, what would you like to tell us?
So we're going for a kitchen addition on the side of the house. It's holding nineteen feet. It's it's typical for the area. Just enhances the overall property and the overall look and character of the neighborhood. It, there was a roof over, or there is a roof over concrete patio currently there. It is holding more or less the same setback as that roof already. So again, no adverse effects. And the trellis and deck are part, you know, go go along with the pool, deck's ungrade. But as you know, uh, you know, just because it's ungraded, still needs a permit without setbacks, and here we are. Again, no adverse effects on that either. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Whoops. Yes, the chairman.
Yes, Mr. Berksen.
So Andrew, uh, is the, is that a rear yard or a side yard for the kitchen?
Uh, well, the the building department determined that it is a rear yard.
Okay.
Because it's seventy one Lincoln is the address.
Okay, so that, okay.
Or seventy nine.
There are other houses, properties that have rear yards at nineteen feet?
Yeah, I mean, you can see the area. I mean, there are tight setbacks all throughout. And although it is technically a rear yard, you know, it more or less is a side yard as well. So it is a unique lot for the area on top of it.
It is a corner lot, and it does, in in that regard, it does create certain issues with respect to extending the house towards the back. Uh, how long, how long has the shed and the trellis and the decking been at that location?
I don't have the exact dates. I I I believe three, four plus years.
Okay, has there been any input or from the neighbor to the, I guess that would be the east, where the trellis and the shed are?
But to my knowledge, there's been no issues with the neighbors regarding anything on this property.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Berksen. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Move to approve the application submitted type two.
Thank you. Motion is by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Malguinara, we can return to case number thirty eight if you have a client available.
Yes.
Very good, then. The case has been called already. Just give us your appearance for the record.
Yes, Andrew Malguinara, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you. And what would you like to tell us here?
So what we're propose, we're proposing a three-story house. It's typical with the neighborhood. We feel there are a lot of houses similar, almost exact in in some circumstances. We did provide the uh, the board with a permit for a property at thirty six Davis Avenue. Pretty much exactly the same house, same architect did both houses. And we're asking for the same thing that that they were already previously granted by the zoning board, I believe in May. And there is a house behind, that is three stories, are numerous three-story houses in the neighborhood. And if the board has any questions, please let me know.
Yes, Andrew, we do have all the material that you submitted on behalf of the application. We also, we are familiar with the board's action in the prior Robert Palmer action, which was case twenty four of March twenty five, two thousand and twenty. In reviewing this for this application, we 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 are finding some distinctions. And I just want you to clarify some things for the record for us. This was, or this was at one time, a one-story dwelling. As I understand it, there's been construction adding a second floor, and then above the second floor, a dormer area. Is that, is that what we have?
That is correct.
And Mr. Vega, do we have, I have the photographs in front of me, but do we have them on? Uh, is that the only one that we have?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have three other ones separate that were submitted as well as a rendering.
The rendering. All right, can you, so we're looking at one of the photographs of the of the house, I'm assuming. All right, that's a rendering. Do you have any actual photographs?
That's not it. That's not the, that's not.
That that's not it?
Yeah, no.
All right. So but in just in terms of a description, it had a first floor. What was built above the first floor?
Uh, a second floor and then a a dormered attic on on top.
All right, so that we had habitable, habitable space on the first floor. We added a second floor, also habitable space. What is, what is, what is, what is the use of the third floor?
It is a, I have the owner here. Can he speak on this?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My swear, my swear, man.
Yes, is is he with you at the at this point?
He is. Yes, I am.
Very good. So I can see you. Let me just ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney so that we can swear you in.
You saw this, we're telling the truth, I hope it's about true.
Yes, I do.
All right, sir. So then, so go ahead. You you, this house was a one-story house. Can you tell us how it's been altered?
Yes, it, yes, it has. It, it was a one-story house. It has been altered to have the the bedrooms moved to the second floor and a dormered attic. It was the same, it's the same architect as what was on Davis with the Palmer House. That's how I originally had seen this thing. There's a second house on on Bartow Avenue that has a dormered attic. Originally, it was, it was meant for space because of extra storage space. But then, since since now, it there, it was originally called a floor and a half. And now, since they determined it's a third floor, um, most likely it will be some sort of living space, although we haven't, we haven't determined yet, since we're only three people in the house and we only need two bedrooms. But it would be like a television, an extra television room or something like that, but but not, not, not a bedroom or bathroom or anything like that.
All right, and the photograph that that we are showing right up now on the screen, is that the house? I'm sorry, so that's another house.
That's the house on Bartow. It's the same footprint, the same square footage, both the Davis Avenue house. Now, that house is a third floor. That's directly behind my house. That house is on Rogers Street. Now, the Rogers Street properties are all fifty by one twenty. This is the only house on Rogers that has a third floor. But the other houses behind me are fifty by one twenty, which is six thousand square feet of property. My property's eighty by one twenty, which gives me ninety six hundred square feet. This picture that you're seeing right now is the house on Davis, which is the same exact dimensions as my house. Actually, I think this might be a hair bigger, depending on how you determine square footage.
Is that, is that, that's not the Palmer residence, is it?
Uh, what we have right now is not, the the one previous is the Palmer House.
All right. The, so that in in terms of the construction of the Palmer House, this board actually acted to grant that application and that can, and that that construction.
Yes.
But in, but specifically in terms of your house, so on the third floor, there's, there's now habitable space, there's living space.
Well, potentially when it's finished, yes.
All right, all right. And in terms of the other residences that are being shown, do you know if any of them exist pursuant to an action of this board or some sort of variance permitting that this number of stories?
Yes, they, the, the red house, no, but the but the Bartow house, definitely. I could only assume the the red house also.
All right. So, Mr. Malguinara, I I thank you, sir. I appreciate the testimony. In terms of, in looking at the prior this, prior actions of this board, I do see that we have granted, such as the instance of the Palmer residence, a three stories, but it was considered two because the first floor, it was a raised house, the first floor was not deemed habitable space. And there's a prohibition against that. We have acted in two other, two other times to deny requests for third stories. And I I'm not sure with it, where this fits in. It certainly appears from the photographs that that there is, there's some basis upon which a request like this could be made. There may be some, some conformity in the area, but I'm not certain how those structures came to be. So I I I do appreciate the fact that you've given us the board's prior action on Palmer and all of the photographs that your office has already submitted. I'd like to see, I'd like to give you an opportunity to provide some evidence of the matter in which this, for instance, right before us, this Bartow Avenue structure was permitted.
Can I interject on the Palmer House one minute, please?
Sir, yes.
So like, I I was in the Palmer House as late as yesterday, and the first floor is a kitchen, a living room, a bathroom. It's got a fireplace. The first floor is very much habitable.
All right. So so it mean if that was the case, it appears as though there might be a violation ongoing there, which the town mayor may not want to pursue. And I know that's not your intention. What you're trying to show us is that there's some conformity for what you're asking. In terms of just looking at strictly this board's action, that was a two-story house with with which was raised. So there's not no habitable space below. I'm more interested in and the Bartow construction and how it was permitted. I'd like to give you an opportunity to provide that to us because I haven't been, I would have requested earlier, but I, this is the first time I'm seeing it. So, Mr. Malguinara, do you understand what I'm asking for?
I understand.
All right. And and certainly any other residential structure in that, in that community that that has been established and permitted with with similar, with with a similar setup.
Understood. So you, so we'll get the plans and find out.
How how it was permitted. Yeah, so it it may have been denied differently in building. It may have, maybe, maybe built without permits. I have no idea. But if you, I'm offering you the possibility to provide some support for the for the relief being requested.
Understood.
Is there anything further from the board on the application?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Cunha.
Andrew, I'm, I'm, I've got a quick question here. This is obviously near the water. My question is, what is the, what is the the rating for this house? What's, what's the velocity rating? Does it have to be raised?
Uh, we actually submitted to Wetlands, believe it or not, and the Wetlands Division returned my application, said I did not need. Uh, we actually submitted to Wetlands, believe it or not, and the Wetlands Division returned my application, said I did not need Wetlands approval.
I'm not talking about Wetlands approval, I'm talking about the um, the FEMA uh, elevation maps. Is that the reason why this is being elevated? Or is it just going, you know, uh, tha- that's what I believe most of the waterfront of these properties on the water. Uh, when they go up three stories, it's because they've been elevated because of FEMA. Uh, is there any requirement here doing this?
The other houses don't, don't appear to be, and, and we'll have to do a little.
None of the houses on the block were raised.
Yeah.
Concerns, this house was not uh, in any way engaged by a sandy type of currents, it was uh, it, it remained dry.
Yeah, and, and, and Rick, if I, if I can clarify while we're discussing, I'm looking at the building denial, it says one family VBNA, I don't know what that means. Within Wetlands NPZ flood zone AE dash five windborne debris region. If that.
An A dash five means it's gotta be elevated fi- to five plus uh, two-foot freeboard, I believe Brookhaven has. But that's neither here nor there, Andrew, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why you need the third story.
Well, it's a, it, it's just a dormered attic for. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Extra space. Right, there's a lot of uh, moving parts here in terms of how, how this occurred. And um, you know, a client just tried to mimic what he thought was another uh, property in the area. So we'll have to do a little research on that to uh, to show how, how that is.
Mr. Cunha, was there anything further?
No, that's it, Mr. Chair, uh.
Alright, I mean, again, I just want to point that we, there are, there are prior actions denying three stories. Again, grants have been for two stories only with ha- with one floor of uninhabitable space. Uh, Mr. Magara will be happy to take in whatever else you'd like, I'm gonna ask the board for a motion to adjourn to.
Unfinished attic, that's fine with me.
Don't move.
To um, to January.
Yeah, can, can we, can we, is it possible to leave it an unfinished attic without making any difference?
That, that would, that would cause you, I believe, to um, to obtain a modified denial from building and then to bring that to us. I, I, I intend to hold it over to, to give you the opportunity to consider all of those options and then to bring the best one that you believe back to us. Um, so what, what I'm suggesting is that we adjourn to January five, we'll adjourn from that date to either the thirteenth or the twenty-seventh.
Thirteen.
Thirteenth, unless you need further time and you'll let us know.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Is there a motion to, to hold over until January five?
Hello.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, tha- that would conclude the uh, four PM calendar, we have one case on the holdover calendar, I'd like to, one, two. I only have one, but we'll see what you got. We have two, go ahead. Are you still in here? Alright, I'm going to, I'm gonna, I'll just read the next case.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good, we, we're on Forsyth.
Uh, case number eighteen of eleven four twenty, Lisa Forsyth, forty-seven Holiday Boulevard, Center Riches, New York. Location, east side of Holiday Boulevard, sixty-seven point five feet north of Drew Lane, Center Riches. Applicant requests permission for proposed second-story residence addition, also front yard setback variance for existing eleven point six feet by thirteen feet deck. Mr. Chair, I have Frank Matola for the applicant.
Thank you. And.
Mr. Chairman, what page is that on?
Uh, that would be on page seventeen, uh, at the lower section of it. Mr. Matola, we see that you're being promoted, we do not have uh, video.
Mr. Chair, I also have the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant also, you can promote the applicant also, Mr. Matola, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Alright, are you able to adjust to, so that your video comes on?
Yeah, it's not coming on for some reason.
I hear Anthony with you then. No, that's okay, we certainly can recognize the voices, but uh, there's nothing that you can do to, to.
Got it, thank you.
Very good. And we, Ms. Forsyth, I, I see that you were also being promoted, if you'd like to put your video and audio on, we can have you participate. Mr. Matola, I'm assuming that you're presenting uh.
Yes, I, yes, I.
Is Ms. Forsyth here to monitor or? Shall we swear or also?
You know.
I am here, uh, can you hear me, excuse me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you, are you able to put your video on?
I tried, it started my video, um.
I think, I think you've done it, no, well, let me ask you, ma'am, are you here to speak or are you here to just monitor the application that's being made on your behalf? Alright, so I'm, I'm gonna leave you exactly where you are, Mr. Matola, I'm gonna ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn.
You saw on the square, tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Very good, your appearance for the record, please.
Um, Frank Matola for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Matola, what would you like to tell us here?
Um, first off, I would like to um, thank the board members and especially Laurie for allowing me to come on tonight, uh, joining it, uh, joining this a couple of times, so I.
Thank you, Mr. Matola, we're glad that you're here.
Okay, um, for the record, um, I have submitted pictures of the subject property, actually, those pictures that were on uh, Andrew's last one were uh, were some of mine. So, just for the, for that, um, I have submitted pictures of the subject property and also neighbors in the immediate area with two-story houses. Uh, concerning the front deck, you can see from the picture of the deck, it is a ground-level deck. Um, as far as the proposed addition, square footage on the second floor, that would result in the original rear roof line, which is a twelve pitch, um, being dormant out to a five pitch, um, no additional bedrooms, just expanding those rooms and adding one bedroom. Uh, the fr- front roof line is going to remain the same, um, and these rooms have knee walls at approximately three feet. So like an old cape that had very limited of square footage upstairs, as far as that's concerned. Uh, Mrs. Forsyth spoke with uh, the neighbors to the north, the east and the west, with the east neighbor being the only one adversely affected um, by this application, and all were in favor. And again, it's just dormering out the, that back area to give a, that added square footage. Approximately eight feet with the length of the house itself, if there was any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Matola, so it appears as though the second story is intended over the main section of the house, not over the garage, so it looks like thirty-six about, by twenty-nine, something like that?
Correct.
And, and the setback um, held by your uh, front yard deck, is that generally conforming to this area?
Uh, without a doubt, and as you can see on the pictures, if you can see on that picture, it's just like a ground-level deck, uh, with a little step there.
And we, we see that the house is modest in the dorm, the, basically, the, the, the development here will enlarge the second story. In terms of just sheer square footage, ultimately, as proposed, how would the square footage of the home compare to other houses on similar sized lots?
Um, I had sent in on November second, some pictures uh, with other neighbors, and there were some um, big-sized houses with uh, you know, big second stories, um, whether additions or the regular CO, that I don't know, but definitely big ones. And again, the front, that, that house is, that, that how, that picture of that house is actually very big and stuff. Um, and the front roof line is gonna remain the same, so the appearance from the road is gonna remain the same.
Thank you, uh, is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to grant the application as presented type two.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Matola.
Thank you very much.
Case number eight of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty, Daniel Roqueech, two forty-five Park Avenue, thirty-ninth floor, New York, New York. Properties located on the northwest corner, Roberts Road and the Green Shirley. Applicant requests permission for proposed double-sided, non-illuminated, sixty-square-foot per-side ground sign. And permission for said sign to be located less than the twelve-foot setback required from William Floyd Parkway, one foot, seven inches proposed.
Mr. Chair, I have Dominic Arresta for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Arresta, we can see, were you able to hear us, sir?
Uh, yes, I can hear you, uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir, let me um, ask you to just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn, please.
You saw on the square, tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, sir.
And let's start with your appearance for the record.
Uh, Dominic Arresta, JM Two Architecture, twenty-four ten North Ocean Avenue, Suite three hundred, Farmingville, New York, uh, agent to the owner.
Very good, sir, thank you, the record should reflect that this matter initially went to public hearing in November eighteen, two thousand twenty, and was held over at the board's request for uh, as I understand, elevations or drawings of the proposed sign, is that what your understanding was, sir?
Uh, ye- yes, sir, so you guys pre- previously reviewed the application, I didn't have a color rendering with the uh, final signs. So I reached out to uh, the two future tenants of uh, the space, and this is what they provided me for their signage. Uh, as you see, we have Family Dollar, which will be ten thousand square foot retail space, and the rest of the building will be uh, Great Skates Family Fund Center, which will be a roller rink and um, arcade.
Thank you, sir, um, I, I believe it was Mr. Lindsay that was asking um, but, or inquiring, but I, I honestly can't remember exactly who. Uh, does the board have further questions now that the rendering is here?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Mazarella.
So, um, yeah, so it, it appears that um, when you were here last, um, the sign did not at least provide, as far as we could see from uh, the drawing that you had. It had no uh, it had no monument at all, looked like it was just coming up from the ground. So, so differences now, it looks like you have some sort of a brick uh, uh, plant or down below, will there be some landscaping uh, below the sign, correct?
Uh, ye- yes, sir, obviously, we're um, we'd like to make a nice appearance and um, make the building welcoming to uh, anyone that plans on enjoying the Family Fun, Fun Center or shopping in the Family Dollar store.
Right, so now, um, the sign itself, as far as uh, uh, providing for lighting for those inserts, um, is that, they're gonna be lighting underneath that uh, that, that roofing area that's gonna light that sign, or how's it gonna be lit?
Uh, yeah, the, the lighting will be in accordance with the uh, with the town standards. So I believe, yes, it'll be, it'll be downlighting.
Okay, I, I'm just, that's my question, is where, you know, because it's not shown here, but where is the lighting gonna be located?
Yeah, I believe it'll be uh, you know, it'll be downlighting, um, wherever conforms uh, to the town standards.
Okay, and the materials being used for the sign, it's, the, the coverage of that sign itself, that uh, you know, that uh, the two um, the two structures that hold that roof, is that uh, um, you know, what type of material?
It's a stucco finish.
With the stucco finished, okay, so more or less like uh, like a cement-looking pier with a, with a, with a stucco, stucco over.
Uh, yes, sir, and it, it'll match the exterior of the building.
Gotcha, okay, and, and down below, is that just gonna be red brick?
Uh, yes, sir, that'll be brick, uh, the owner will have the final say in the, on the brick selection.
Okay. Uh, no further questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Excuse me, um, but in terms of the, getting, just getting back to the lighting of the applic- uh, for the sign, I am looking at the relief request, it says non-illuminated. I don't think that there's been a change, I just know that the passage of time, um, this is not as fresh as it was the first time that it was presented. Unless there's a change in, an amendment to the application, I have it as double-sided, non-illuminated, sixty-square-foot per-side ground sign. Is that um?
Yes, uh, I, I do believe you're right, uh, there is no illumination, it's not gonna be a backlit sign, um, or anything, so.
Alright, alright, is there anything further from the board on the application?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cunha.
I'm just curious at the height of the sign, uh, we have now what looks like a wall, and then, you know, then you have the, it's still, it technically a piling, a piling, a pylon sign, um, just looking for the overall height on this.
And it, you could probably help us with it, um, sir, I will tell you that there's no request for height relief, as, as far as I understand.
Um, one second, the, the total height is ten feet. Of the, of the sign itself, and then the base is um, about one-six, about one, it's like a one-foot stone base, and then ten foot above that for the sign itself, so. Um, last time you guys reviewed uh, several pylon signs in the area, and um, you know, this one's actually much smaller than some of the other signs on the street.
Yeah, I was just curious about the height of the wall, because that, obviously, you're changing the grade around it in order to raise the sign higher, I just wanted to know how tall that wall was, okay, very good, thank you.
But in, in terms of the application, to prevent you from coming back here, I think that we have to be clear, it's a, a ten-foot-high pylon sign, but you're now saying it is raised one and a half feet or so due to the, the brick base. So, if, if the board finds that acceptable, we would have to move with a ten-foot pylon sign on a one-point-six-foot um, base with an overall height of, I believe that if we granted ten-foot-high pylon sign, the applicant may be back. Um, it could, it could very well be that we'll know what we wanna do once we deliberate, or we could do it right here, it's up to.
Um, yeah, I'd like to clarify, it, it is, it is ten foot total from the grade to the very top of the sign.
So that, that includes the whole.
Base is one foot, and then it's seven foot to the, to the roof.
Alright, so then, then there's no need to amend or clarify the application?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you, um, is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Grant the application.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella to grant, I'll take the second from Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you for uh, returning with us again.
Yeah, thank you, sir, have a good night, everyone.
Alright, thank you, uh, we will be taking fifteen minutes, uh, and to meet for an executive session, so it's six fifty-five, seven ten. Acceptable? Yes, no?
I'll do the best I can.
All moved.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Anthony, just send the executive session email. The link?
Yeah, Jimmy, I did.
Okay, what time, when did you send that?
I'll tell you.
I see it, got it. It was buried. Alright, good. Thank you.
Hey Rick.
Okay.
All right, am I missing anyone?
One, two, three, four, five.
Rick, take a look.
Yeah, you're missing Jimmy again.
Jimmy Wisdom, up, here he is.
He's here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, very good.
Hi, Rick.
Why does Howard always go?
Yep, Jim is close.
Jimmy's coming. There he is.
Excellent, is there a motion to resume the hearing? Motion made and seconded all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries board members turning to today's worksheet page number two. Case number six, in the name of Triple Five Aviation Industries Incorporated, does the board have a motion? Chair would move to grant for a special permit for a period of two years for storage and training for a maximum of 200 Amazon-owned delivery vans, no vehicle access to Flower Hill Drive, all training to occur during business hours on site, no loading or unloading at the site.
Second.
And it is a type-two action, motion is by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 23. Under request for grant extension, case 32 of, looks like September 6, 19, I'm sorry, 2017, in the name of Jimmy Bayans, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the prior grant of 11/15/2017 and extended to expire by 15/20 is extended for a second and final six-month period to expire, 3/21/2021.
That motion is by Mr. Lazaru. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries under request for extension of time to file covenants, case 32 of September 6, 2017. Also, in the name of Jimmy Bayans, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to file the covenants is extended for a period of three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 24. Case number three of November 28, 2018, in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of 11/28/18 is extended for six months to expire on 5/28/21.
Second motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries continuing on the page, case number four of November 28, 2018, also in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved that the prior grant of November 28, 2018 is extended for six months to expire on 5/28/21.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries continuing on the page, case number four of November 28, 2018, also in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the prior grant of 11/15/2017 and extended to expire by 15/20 is extended for a second and final six-month period to expire, 3/21/2021.
That motion is by Mr. Lazaru. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries under request for extension of time to file covenants, case 32 of September 6, 2017. Also, in the name of Jimmy Bayans, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to file the covenants is extended for a period of three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 24. Case number three of November 28, 2018, in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of 11/28/18 is extended for six months to expire on 5/28/21.
Second motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries continuing on the page, case number four of November 28, 2018, also in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved that the prior grant of November 28, 2018 is extended for six months to expire on 5/28/21.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries under request for clarification, case number 12 of June 3, 2020, in the name of Nicole Bell, the chair would move to that the prior grant of July 15, 2020 is clarified to reflect approval for a 400-square-foot first-floor addition, 20 by 20, and for a 216-square-foot second-floor addition for a maximum square footage on the second floor of 700 square feet, remaining conditions as previously approved. Second. Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? That motion carries, turning to page 25. Cases 47 through 48 of July 15, 2020, in the name of Robert Frydel, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, motion prior grant of 9/9/20 is modified to reflect the deletion of part of grant that states, subject to cross-access and maintenance agreement for the existing driveway to be shared by both parcels, an alternate location for parcel location and parcel access is prohibited due to the significant oak trees within the panhandle for Lot B, remaining conditions as originally approved.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 26. Cases one through three of May 22, 2019, in the name of 262 Long Island Avenue LLC. The chair would move. That a new application for a two-lot subdivision may, can be filed, the lots, lot areas for the two lots to be created at 48,223 square feet and 71,675 square feet with a proposed new dwelling to front on Sylvan, Sylvan Drive. Second. Motion is by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries continuing on the page, case 23 of September 25, 2019, in the name of Colcasey Home Builders, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant to stipulations of settlement dated 12/9/20.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. I believe that was seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused, motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Continuing on the page, case 32 of October 23, 2019, in the name of Joy Selter LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant to stipulations of settlement dated 12/9/20.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? The record again will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused, motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Turning to page 27. Case 29 of May 20, 2020, in the name of Glenis Duran Domenico, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant to stipulation of settlement dated 12/9/20.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, again seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then turning to finally board members to, I believe, case page 20, I'm sorry, no, just page 29 at this point, cases three and four of September 23, 2020, in the name of Bollywood Entertainment GP Incorporated, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to deny pursuant to facts and findings, facts of finding, findings of fact and conclusions.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella. Seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha has abstained, motion carries six in favor with one abstention. And then to page 30. Cases 25 and 26 of October 21, 2020, in the name of ICA Enterprise Inc., does the board have a motion?
Chairman moved to deny pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries four in favor with three opposed. And that would be. That would be Mr. Cunha, Mr. Lazaru, and Mr. Lindsay, opposed motion carries four in favor with three opposed. At the bottom of the page, case seven of November 4, 2020, in the name of VP RO Fiona LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to deny pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions.
Motion by Mr. Mazarella. Seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page 27. Case 29 of May 20, 2020, in the name of Glenis Duran Domenico, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant to stipulations of settlement dated 12/9/20.
Finally. To page 31, case 15 of November 4, 2020, in the name of Christopher and Anne Mae Young. Mr. Lindsay, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Great. Type-two action. Subject to requirements of Chapter 78A. Subject to execution and filings in the Office of Suffolk County Clerk of Covenants and Restrictions that there will be no habitable space in the garage. Second story shall remain unfinished with no plumbing or heat source and shall be utilized as storage only.
Hey Rick.
All right, am I missing anyone?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five.
Rick, take a look.
Yeah, you're missing Jimmy again.
Jimmy Wisdom, up, here he is.
He's here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, very good.
Hi, Rick.
Why does Howard always go?
All right, yep, Jim is close.
Jimmy's coming. There he is.
Excellent, is there a motion to resume the hearing?
So.
Motion made and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries board members turning to today's worksheet page number two. Case number six, in the name of Triple Five Aviation Industries Incorporated, does the board have a motion? Chair would move to grant for a special permit for a period of two years for storage and training for a maximum of 200 Amazon-owned delivery vans, new vehicle access to Flower Hill Drive, all training to occur during business hours on-site, no loading or unloading at the site.
Second.
Uh, and it is a type-two action. Motion is by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, turning to page twenty-three. Under request for grant extension, case thirty-two of, looks like September sixth nineteen, I'm sorry, twenty-seventeen, uh, in the name of Jimmy Bayans, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the prior grant of eleven fifteen, two thousand seventeen, and extended to expire by fifteen twenty, is extended for a second and final six-month period to expire, three twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
That motion is by Mr. Lazaru.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries under request for extension of time to file covenants, case thirty-two of September sixth, two thousand seventeen. Also in the name of Jimmy Bayans, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the time to file the covenants is extended for a period of three months from the date of the letter.
Motion is by Mr. Lazaru.
Second.
Again, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, to page twenty-four. Case number three of November twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of eleven twenty-eight, eighteen, is extended for six months to expire on five twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Second motion is by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, uh, continuing on the page, case number four of November twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, also in the name of Clifton Associates LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved that the prior grant of November twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen, is extended for six months to expire on five twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries under request for clarification, case number twelve of June three, two thousand twenty, in the name of Nicole Bell. Uh, the, the chair would move to, that the prior grant of July fifteen, two thousand twenty, is clarified to reflect approval for a four-hundred-square-foot first-floor addition, twenty by twenty, and for a two-hundred-sixteen-square-foot second-floor addition for a maximum square footage on the second floor of seven hundred square feet, remaining conditions as previously approved.
Second.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, turning to page twenty-five. Cases forty-seven through forty-eight of July fifteen, two thousand twenty, in the name of Robert Frydel, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, motion prior grant of nine nine twenty is modified to reflect the deletion of part of grant that states subject to cross-access and maintenance agreement for the existing driveway to be shared by both parcels. An alternate location for parcel location and parcel access is prohibited due to the significant oak trees within the panhandle for lot B, remaining conditions as originally approved.
That motion is by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries to page twenty-six. Uh, cases one through three of May twenty-two, two thousand nineteen, in the name of Two Six Two Long Island Avenue LLC. The chair would move that a new application for a two-lot subdivision may, can be filed, uh, the lots, that areas for the two lots to be created at forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-three square feet and seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five square feet with a proposed new dwelling to front on Sylvan, uh, Sylvan Drive. Second, motion is by the chair, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, continuing on the page, uh, case twenty-three of September twenty-five, two thousand nineteen, in the name of Col Casey Home Builders, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant to stipulations of settlement dated twelve nine twenty.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. I believe that was seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused, motion carry six in favor with one recusal. Uh, continuing on the page, case thirty-two of October twenty-three, two thousand nineteen, in the name of Joy Selter LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pursuant stipulations of settlement dated twelve nine twenty.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record again will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused, motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Turning to page twenty-seven. Uh, case twenty-nine of May twenty, two thousand twenty, in the name of Glenis Duran Domenico, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted pers- granted pursuant to stipulation of settlement dated twelve nine twenty.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, again seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then turning to finally board members to, I believe, case page twenty, I'm sorry, no, just page twenty-nine at this point, cases three and four of September twenty-three, two thousand twenty, in the name of Bollywood Entertainment GP Incorporated, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, move to deny pursuant to facts and finding, facts of finding, uh, findings and fact and conclusions.
Motion is by Mr. Mazarella.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha has abstained, motion carry six in favor with one abstention. And, uh, then to page thirty. Case twenty-five and twenty-six of October twenty-one, two thousand twenty, in the name of ICA Enterprise Inc., does the board have a motion?
Chairman moved to deny pursuant to findings and fact and conclusions.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Opposed.
Okay, motion carries four in favor with three opposed. And that would be uh, that would be Mr. Cunha, Mr. Lazaru, and Mr. Lindsay, uh, opposed motion carries four in favor with three opposed. Uh, at the bottom of the page, case seven of November four, two thousand twenty, in the name of VPRO Fiona LLC, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to deny pursuant to findings and facts and conclusions.
Motion by Mr. Mazarella.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lazaru, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? I could reflect again, Mr. Cunha, Mr. Lindsay, and Mr. Wisdom, our opposed motion carries four in favor with three opposed. Finally. Uh, to page thirty-one, case fifteen of November four, two thousand twenty, in the name of Christopher and Anne Mae Young. Mr. Lindsay, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Granted. Type-two action. Subject to requirements of chapter seventy-eight A. Subject to execution and filings in the Office of Suffolk County Clerk of covenants and restrictions that there will be no habitable space in the garage. Second story shall remain unfinished with no plumbing or heat source and shall be utilized as storage only. Plumbing shall be permitted on the first floor, limited to single sink and toilet only. Heat source shall be permitted to first floor. No partition room or sleeping area shall be established in the garage. Said covenants and restrictions that there are to be, that are to be filed in the Office of the Suffolk County Clerk shall be submitted to the Office of submit to the Office of Board of Zoning Appeals for review and approval prior to filing with Suffolk County Clerk within a hundred and eighty days. Failure to comply with this requirement shall render the grant null and void.
Second.
That motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by, I took that, I heard Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, finally at the bottom of the page, case twenty-two of November eighteen, two thousand twenty, in the name of Robert Arnold, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Granted for CEU for one family, two-story dwelling, seventy-point-six feet by thirty-two-point-one and for one family. Two-story dwelling, carriage house. Forty-point-three feet by twenty-three by six with attached frame barn. Two-five times, uh, I mean by forty-point-four and shed twenty-eight by twelve feet five inches for overall dimensions of eighty feet nine inches, thirty-two, five inches. Lower portion of the carriage garage has one-car garage with studio living area and second story maintains carriage house living unit. Same will be reflected on a certificate of existent use. Type-two action.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay.
Second.
The second I'll take from Mr. Wisdom, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused, that motion carries six in favor with one recusal. Now, that, that completes the work of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the year two thousand twenty, is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second have been made, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all.
Merry Christmas, have a happy new year, guys.
Happy new year, everybody, Merry Christmas.